It's all been in order. You have to do a road call, Mayor Ford, Tim, are you here?
Yes.
Okay, Councilman Ryan, are you here?
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Spears, are you here? Councilmember Spears? All right, Councilmember Waddell?
Here.
Councilmember Andrews?
Here.
Councilmember Joyner?
Here.
Chair is here. Okay, this time we'll turn this thing over to our city manager. Paul, Paul, we're gonna make this short and sweet this morning. I'll do it. At least I am. I said, the rest of the time, it's up to you, Paul. Um, I just wanted to say that we've gotten to you a proposed budget.
Recording in progress.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, let's start again. We've gotten to you a proposed budget that is built on the three pillars that we set out last Tuesday night. Uh, we believe that it is a sound, uh, budget based upon what you have previously passed in terms of policy and direction for the, for the staff. If we've gotten it wrong, we apologize in advance, but we wanted to know, wanted you to know that we think this is a good, sound budget that we think is built on all three of those pillars. Uh, yesterday, there was a great deal of information flying around and we were sending out, uh, information as late as five and six o'clock last night. And then we sent some more information out this morning. We sent out the, uh, presentations electronically. So those who are participating remotely will have the opportunity to look at those as well. Uh, with that, we do have a number of items that we wanted to go over with you in anticipation of trying to answer the questions that have been asked previously. We sent out two documents. One has been, uh, in response to the, uh, questions that Councilman Waddell asked, uh, at the, uh, I believe it was on the presentation night. And then since then, Councilman Joyner had sent some questions and we sent responses back out to those as well. Some of the questions that were answered will be, uh, were better suited to presentations this morning. So that we can give a more in-depth explanation of, uh, the answer, hopefully thereby giving you, uh, more information. So what we're going to do this morning is we're going to talk a little bit about budget adjustments. And then we're going to try to answer some of those questions that you had previously asked. And then we'll throw it open to you for questions and any information that we may need to get from you.
Paul?
Good morning. I'm gonna walk you through some of the known budget adjustments that we have, um, since either been told about, you know, or following budget that we'd like to correct before we adopt the budget. They relate to our HUD entitlement funding and we have some administrative corrections that we just want to let you know the budget will look a little different when we give it to you and then Safe Life as well. This one is for the HUD entitlement, this slide, and it impacts for, um, four funds. And so it's gonna come in piece by piece. It impacts the CBDG and the home. Those are the ones that get the entitlement funding. And within those, they allow us to send, um, some funding to our admin, to a certain service and provide that service on that fund. And so we have, um, about thirty thousand dollars that is gonna be having to be changed. Um, we lost eleven percent of our funding from last year, so we lost about a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars, um, that we had to reduce. And they had, the federal government has a formula and it's usually based on those in poverty and some other factors. And we decreased by a hundred percent again, similar to last year. Um, this decrease will have to be changed in the CBDG and so thirty thousand dollars is coming out of, um, the transfer for these federal funds. And we will be shifting it from the general fund because that is where we have the funds sent. And so what that will do is take it away from the CBDG or the gap financing and we will be shifting it for that. So it just increases it by thirty thousand dollars transfer. Is there any questions on that? It's a little complicated because it involves four funds. Okay, the next, these are just the ones that you will see shifting the sundry. We, uh, know that the continuing care agency, it actually went up to seventy thousand from sixty-four and so we would like to be able to fund that rainfall. Um, New Hanover. Dylan? New Hanover County Crime Lab, um, it was an estimated amount, um, prior to the recommended budget. And so now it's going up about twenty-three thousand dollars. And so we'd like to ship this funding, which is the total of twenty-eight thousand dollars from our miscellaneous sundry. So it's a net zero essentially. And then finally, we have the Safe Life. So thank you, Councilwoman Waddell, for asking your question. We did find that we had budgeted both interests in the project that was earning the project as well as doing the transfer over. Um, so the transfer over for one time and the budget, um, from the general fund is not needed this year because of that interest. We do expect a transfer to be needed next year. And so we will, um, be taking that reduction from the funded, um, general fund, fund balance. So we'll reduce it by two hundred thousand because it's one time and we'll reduce the project by the same amount.
So, uh, last year, we had lengthy discussion about the deficit that was there in this program, roughly two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Are we anticipating that same deficit or something along those lines coming up this next year?
I suspect that you're talking about the deficit that is shared between the county and the city that we pay for the service to be provided.
Uh, yeah, we, we were, the cost, the actual net, I'll call it net loss to the city was about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. What is that net loss gonna be roughly the same?
I believe so. It should be around two hundred, two hundred and thirty. And we do have some slides if you need something.
Yeah, I, I've heard the questions about that. I just wanted to make sure. Got some other answers. Thank you.
Is that net loss identical to the county's net loss or?
County's, county's net loss is capped at two hundred and thirty-five thousand. So they, they contribute half of the two thirty-five and so far that number has been met.
Of course, I want to say it again, the, the revenue from that goes to the school system.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Ninety percent and then ten percent is made up, but it's supposed to be a net neutral program, but it costs us, it costs the taxpayer around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Cost, well, that actually costs the taxpayer about five hundred thousand.
To be willing to tax it at two fifty.
Well, yeah.
Well, five hundred.
Thank you.
You're right.
That is all the adjustments I have. If there's any questions related to any of those.
Do you want to get into the questions?
No, no, I'm gonna, it's part of a larger.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, we have a, a number of, as I mentioned earlier, some responses, some detailed responses to questions that have been asked. And we're gonna try to get to those, uh, this morning. We're gonna discuss, first of all, the question that Councilman Waddell asked about the mental health resources for public safety folks. And I'm gonna ask if Clayton will step to the mic and give us a summary of that, of course, Chief Williams. Here, I was looking for Steve. I heard Steve Chief Williams. And what if the chiefs are here and can speak to this matter if you have questions for them?
Yes, uh, good morning, everybody. Uh, as Tony said, uh, Chief Mason and, uh, Chief Williams, um, this is a topic very important to both of them as, as well as their staff. Because, you know, they experienced much trauma on a day-to-day basis. So as an organization, we have provided some enhancements to our mental health, uh, resources. And so we just talked about the resources we have available to all employees as well as the resources specific to public safety. So if you look at all of our available resources or the resources to all employees, uh, we have an EAP program. Um, all employees and members of their household receive six free counseling sessions per individual, per calendar year, per issue. And these visits can be done in person or they can be done virtually. Depends on what the individual wants to do. So if an employee needs counseling for anxiety, they get six free sessions for that issue. And then if they have, you know, marrow problems, they can get six free counseling sessions for that issue. Um, we increased the number of visits from three to six back in 2020. Also available to all employees that are on health insurance, um, is Teladoc. Um, individuals receive access to free unlimited virtual counseling visits and those appointments are forty-five minutes each. And that's with a certified trained therapist or psychiatrist. Again, there's a zero dollar copay to our employees and their dependents who utilize that service.
Question.
Sure.
Um, because I did a webinar on, on employee benefits and, um, what percentage of our employees actually use, um, our, our mental health benefits?
Um, that's a great question. I think off the top of my head, there were, uh, twenty-nine, um, in-person visits for the AP last year. And there were six virtual visits. With Teladoc, there are eleven unique, um, users of that service.
I think that's something that we need to, you know, educate our employees more about, that that's available.
Absolutely. Yep. Um, looking at our fire department resources that they have available, uh, they have a robust peer support program, which is made up of trained, uh, WFD personnel. Basically, these, um, are individuals that staff can go to if they're experiencing issues and they're just there for support and to let them know that, you know, they're there with them. They've experienced similar issues. They can direct them to certain resources. Um, if they're not comfortable talking to a peer within the organization, uh, for confidentiality reasons, we can redirect them to a peer agency. They can talk to a peer support, like, for example, New Hanover County Fire Department too. Also, the WFD has a chaplain program and this is made up of, uh, trained, um, WFD personnel. And they have a chaplain assigned to each shift. Um, they also are assisted by the warrior family. And then they, they implemented over the last couple of years, a Canine Crisis Response Dog program. They have five crisis response dogs that aid our firefighters in de-escalation of stress, um, post-call, easing tensions, lowering anxiety at the station, which also reduces the long-term effects of PTSD.
Why don't we add one?
I don't like that. And they must have leave.
I'm not asking you. Because you're on the Tuesday night, can we bring the dogs down?
Because your mean old manager won't let dogs in the building.
I can have one here about fifteen minutes. Say the word, I could have a half.
I want one. I just want one of the alls.
Our police department, um, has also a peer support, um, program made of trained personnel. Um, they also have a chaplain program and that program is made of non-sporing volunteers who provide support and comfort to personnel, victims and others. They're often called to crime scenes. They also complete office hours at M K U headquarters. The police department also has implemented critical incident appointments. And whenever personnel are involved in traumatic events such as a shooting or a death, um, our officers meet with the psychologist who will explore responses, reactions to the event, discusses available family, social, church and other recent sources and support systems. Um, and just making sure they're aware that they have, uh, the resources, their family, their doctor, EAP, other resources at the city. And these visits are a hundred percent paid, uh, by the organization. Finally, uh,
Sorry, are they getting in in a timely manner?
Um, that is something, uh, that we have been having an issue with, uh, with, with critical incidents through FMRT specifically. Um, sometimes it's taking them, um, you know, a little more than a week and we like to have people seen within the week, obviously. Um, so we've been having conversations with them, but there's a new program that I'm gonna talk about in a second that can, uh, potentially supplement this. Uh, Chief Williams can talk more about this if he'd like, but he started a wellness initiative last year and he's really looking at the whole wellness picture. Well, uh, financial, physical, emotional, nutritional, um, and he started to provide, uh, he has a staff member that provides eight to ten hours of time in the gym. Uh, basically, uh, he's a certified trainer, uh, providing employees, um, with the skills in, in, uh, teaching them how to lift, squat, bench press, so that they can, uh, make sure that they're healthy and that they can, um, you know, perform their job. They've also applied for a no-match grant to the Department of Justice, um, to potentially get a wellness app for employees. Um, and basically this is gonna allow them to, um, anonymously chat with better professionals, get tips on sleep, stress, financial wellness, um, by click of, of, of their phone. Um, and so this is a, a program Chief's excited about. Chief, you want to say anything else about that?
Um, the only thing that I would like to add to it is Clayton's gonna talk about a new initiative through the state. And one of the things that we're looking at with this wellness program and grant, the new initiative to the state only focuses in on the officer. It does not focus in on the family. So we're hoping with this grant application that we'll be able to do it where it's not just the employee, but it's the family when they go home.
All right. So another thing that we have, all our police and fire, um, get an annual physical every year. It's a requirement. And part of that is they sit down and they complete, I think, six or seven questions asking about, uh, their emotional, mental, um, health. Um, this questionnaire is then reviewed by our medical provider, uh, who can then refer them to additional resources as needed. Uh, just this week, Chief Mason and I had a discussion about, uh, seeing if we can implement an enhanced questionnaire that will provide even more resources or feedback to the employee and the provider. Um, we're currently having conversations with Wilmington Health on that. So I want to talk about this new program that I think Chief Williams brought forward, uh, to me and I was like, where has this been? How did we not know about this resource? And then Chief Mason was, had the same reaction as I did. Um, so the Department of Public Safety launched this program in 2019. It's called the Responder Assistance Initiative. It provides unlimited, unlimited free access to counseling services specifically for our police and fire. Um, through this program, they provide individual, couples, family and group counseling with licensed mental health professionals. And the cool thing about this is a lot of them are trained, or all of them are trained specifically to deal with issues unique to police and fire. Many of these professionals have a background actually working in the mental profession. So that's really important. Um, the benefit of this program to our employees, a lot of employees might be hesitant to use the AP because, uh, they may think that the city is gonna have access to their information. They don't trust going to the AP. This is a hundred percent separate. It's not provided by the city. Uh, we don't get any reporting back to us, um, on utilization. And it's set up that way so that employees feel that they can go and get that a hundred percent confidentiality, not have to worry about anything getting back to the city. Um, so that was one of the reasons why we, uh, Fire had initially put in, uh, a benefit in their budget similar to this request. By talking with Chief Mason, it seems like this could meet that. Um, and Chief Mason, do you want to speak about kind of some of the initial response you guys have had with this program?
Sure. Uh, I can talk all day about mental health and fire service, but, uh, so this, uh, like, like Clayton said, uh, we, this program has just kind of come out of nowhere, although it's been in existence for, for several years. It started, uh, with the correctional officers. It was a program that was offered to them, um, exclusively. It branched out to, uh, highway control, the SBI. Uh, and then last year, I believe it was in July, it, it, some session of the General Assembly, they decided to expand the program to first responders. Now, they've done an absolutely horrible job of communicating it to the people that could benefit from this program and I certainly let them know about that. In fact, last week I was in the North Carolina Metro Chiefs meeting and I shared all of this information with my peers across the state and not a single one of them had heard about this.
Wow.
Uh, yeah, so, so the state really has got to step up their, uh, their game as far as letting people know about this. So, uh, if you're familiar with what we requested in the budget, this is very much in line with what we have asked for for the last two years. Um, you know, just being completely transparent on this, uh, I'm cautiously optimistic about this program. We do have a, a few people, of course, they're not going to be telling me how many people and specifics, but some of our folks have, um, already jumped on and, uh, are starting to vet this program. Um, I've asked that these folks come out and speak to all of our people. They have done that. In fact, they have done almost nine meetings now, just trying to get throughout the department. Uh, they're being very well received and, um, I'm personally trying to vet the program myself. So, uh, I've been pretty open with that with the department. Um, so I think this is, has the potential to, to be an absolutely fantastic program. Um, but again, I, I say that I'm cautiously optimistic. I think if, if in fact this does meet our needs, then, um, we need to use it as much as possible to make sure that the state continues to fund it. Um, and I'm encouraging my folks to go out there and if you need to talk to somebody, this is a great, a great way to do it. So, um, we'll see how it goes, but right now I feel pretty good about it. And I, I wish that I had known about this six months ago, but, uh, you know, that's, uh, just how it goes. I appreciate Chief Williams or Clayton or whoever found, stumbled across this program, sharing with us. But so far, um, and, and to your point earlier, uh, Councilman Joyner about the timeliness, uh, that we had a incident, uh, last week where a couple of our companies downtown responded to a one-month-old, had to do CPR on a child, the child did not make it. Um, our safety chief reached out to, uh, the folks here with, uh, the responder initiative. The next shift day that those folks came back to work, they did a critical incident stress briefing for them. Uh, so they are here. That's the other thing that makes, uh, it makes this particular program good for us is because we're fortunate enough that they actually have an office right here on Riceville Avenue. So not every community, a city, town, whatever, has that in, in their town. So they still have access to the program and it's really convenient when you have them just down the street. And so that's, that's a huge deal. Um, and, uh, yeah, I just, I appreciate Clayton's support on that and bringing that to us, but.
Thank you. Thanks, Jake.
I want to, I want to point out, this is a, as Steve mentioned, it has been a request for the fire department for two years now, Chief.
Yes.
Um, something that he's been really focusing on over the course of the past two years. We were very glad to find it. Um, uh, Chief Williams was, uh, speaking with the folks, brought it forward. Uh, we are gonna vet it, just like Chief, uh, Mason said. We're gonna vet it and see how it works. Uh, it's something that you would have seen probably in the budget had it not come through this way. There would have been an expenditure for it. Um, but for right now, we want to see how this works and I'm, my fear is that as it gets more popular, it's gonna, that the state will not fund it to the, to the level that will be necessary. But we're gonna keep an eye on it. We're gonna keep working on it and hopefully it'll meet our needs, so.
They're actually hoping to expand it to retirees and potentially down the road to family members as well. So it's that, that down the road, like Phil was saying, if the word gets out, it's gonna be a challenge for the state to, it's, the state to continue to fund it. Once the floodgate, I think we can really take advantage of this program.
Stop telling me. Um, so our next steps are to communicate the responder assistance initiative with both police and fire. Uh, I know, uh, Chief Williams, uh, his communication staff have videoed together, uh, pushed it out to the department. And I hear Mason's doing a good job communicating within his staff. Uh, we, we want to make sure staff know all the resources available to them, whether that's the AP or Teladoc. Uh, there's also some misconceptions about, you know, both the AP and Teladoc that are out there. We want to make sure we put out some advocacy news to address those. Um, and then what's real important also is to communicate with, uh, Wilmington Health, who is our occupational provider, which our police and fire go to for their physicals, as well as our city clinic downstairs, uh, letting them know the resources that when they encounter employees, whether it be general employees or police and fire, they can direct them to these resources. And then as, as, um, Tony mentioned, monitor employee feedback. That's real important. If we find out that this isn't meeting our needs and we're running into issues and we need to, you know, back up and see what our options are. Any questions?
Yeah, Clayton, with that, um, statement that you just made, excuse me, I'm concerned like, um, um, like Andrews, about the idea of our employees not using the mental health service. I mean, with all the number of employees that we have and, and to say that only six and eleven people have used the service, um, what are we missing? Are we not getting it out there quick enough, fast enough, or, or is it that people just don't know?
I think it's a mixture of both. Um, I think, uh, we can do a better job of communicating it. And like I said, putting out those FAQs essentially, because there's a misconception that, you know, it's not private, that we're gonna get the list of names of individuals and that's not, all they give us is, is a number of, of people that have utilized the service. We don't know who, what department they're in, any of that information. Also misconception that, you know, they're gonna have to pay for this. Um, they potentially could if they go over the six visits, uh, but if they need more than that, they could, if the provider's in, in network, then they can utilize their insurance to, to continue to see that provider. Another thing is, um, uh, you know, they can't see me in a timely manner. Um, we've, uh, been in contact with the AP. Their goal is to get someone seen within the first week. Um, if, if they haven't, if the employee hasn't seen someone that first week, you know, we, we need to know about that. We need to let our EAP know because they'll reach out and make sure that that's, uh, that person is seen in a timely manner. So we're just putting out some of these, uh, facts, um, and educating staff, I think will go a long way. Um, but you're still gonna have those individuals that are just hesitant to, uh, to utilize the resource for whatever reason. Um, but we definitely have, have some options available.
There's also a stigma that goes along with using mental health services.
Okay, thank you.
So honestly, from, from our perspective, um, my folks' perspective, there's, there's no trust factor with the AP. And I don't mean this, it's, it's, for anyone. I know, we've just said, you have done a good job, you've charged, done a good job of trying to provide these resources. But I can tell you from our, from my internal perspective, our people don't trust it. Um, not necessarily about their data, but, um, or their personal information, but, but they don't trust the system and they can't, it's a phone call. And so it's hard enough to get people to ask for help, but then to make a phone call to somebody on the other end that they don't know, they're not sure where they're at, they're probably not local, um. Part of the thing that has been very positive, very well received by our folks is the fact that the responder initiative folks have come out in person and you're like seeing some of the counselors and they're sharing the information about the program. And it's like, hey, we're right here downtown or right just down the street here and myself and I have three other counselors. And so people are seeing faces and they're like, okay, well, this place seems pretty cool. Or this guy knows what he's talking about. He's got street cred essentially because he's a retired Charlotte guy that is getting, you know, has helped itself to be, so. People relate to it. And I think the distance between the employee and the EAP program is part of the problem. And, you know, if they, whoever they is could come around and like put a face with that telephone or talk to employees about how, how the process works, you know, it's easy to read it in the, in the employee handbook and, and listen to, to us kind of communicate that. But people, I have to, when you're talking about mental health, especially with firefighters and I want to speak for Chief Williams folks, but first responders are really protective about their careers and, and, you know, sharing information. And, you know, the last thing they want to do is, God forbid, if I tell somebody I've got a problem, I might lose my job. So there's God who that trusts back and that's really what's, what's key. And once people feel like they can trust it and the peers start coming back, not people that wear a white shirt, people who wear a blue shirt come back and goes, you know what, I, I went and saw Sarah over there at the clinic the other day. She's awesome, man. She's really been kind of helping me. And, you know, maybe you should give her a call, kind of. Those things are sell the program. It's not me.
Right. And another thing that I heard from the government folks is that, um, you know, managers, supervisors, using the program when they need to and letting their employees know, oh yeah, I've used this program, you know, because that, it's really leading by example.
Yep, being the ambassador.
Double click on this EAP program, a little for EAP, a little bit. What, is this a, this is, this city, it's obvious, it's a city initiative, but is it run within the city or is it a third party?
It's a third party. It's through One America.
And we've had seven, um, seven employees use it.
Uh, no, we've had more. We had twenty-nine, uh, in-person visits and then I think nine, uh, virtual visits, uh, last year.
You know, one of the key words in there is confidential. And we know that that can only go so far if something dramatic happened, they would have to unseal that confidentiality, I would think. But, I mean, that, that can certainly give them some degree of confidence that what they're saying is gonna be held in strict confidence.
Absolutely. It's not a part of anything city benefits, but it's separate.
But again, Steve says it's convincing the rank and file that it truly is confidential.
Somebody may sound real trustworthy today, it may not tomorrow. So that confidential overrides that, in my opinion.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Next, we had a question about the, um, engineering position that we placed in the budget that was newly funded um, with regard to right-of-way permitting. And I'm gonna ask that Dave Cowell come forward and give you a little bit of background on this. Dave?
Mayor, Mayor Lieutenant, Councilmember, thanks for the chance to talk about this position. A new engineering associate position is proposed to support the right-of-way permanent program. Right-of-way is a right to pass through someone's property until an expert in moving their goods and services. So why do we issue right-of-way permits? We regulate work to ensure it meets technical standards such as pavement restoration. Product instructor minimizes the city's future maintenance costs. We also regulate work to ensure it combines with standards such as the manual on uniform traffic control devices and the Americans with Disabilities Act. Engineering reviews establish alignments for utilities that minimize conflicts with future street improvements. Permits vary significantly, but it normally takes about three days to enter a permit. Permits vary significantly, but it normally takes about three days to enter a permit. Typical, typical permit is about three inspections with the optimal number being three to five inspectors. Of course, more complex permits can require considerably more time. The proposed revisions to the fee schedule, which I talked about last time I was here, will supplement funding for this new position, be phased in over four years. The survey estimate predicts a tripling of baseline permits from two thousand and six to twenty twenty eight. So this does not include the work that's coming for the fiber optic networks, which are kind of, we don't have any, uh, data to analyze for that yet, but it's kind of take my best stab at representing that in the purple shading there. So it will have a surge, which will taper off. Utility located tickets were used to estimate the amount of unpermitted work as our compliance average had been phased out several years ago. So in recent years, uh, we've not been able to educate the utility companies on how to comply with the permit program, so we've had, um, incidents where contractor will just close down a road without permits. Or do work and that we don't know about, so we'll find out later that there's an excavation that's still open, we're gonna restore the red light. So why is a position needed? Uh, we've been increasingly diverting resources from construction inspection to processing permanent functions. And this position will restore the balance between those two functions.
Will this enable it to, to, the timeline to shrink or, or keep it growing?
It'll allow us to do a better job. Uh, the, the permit reviews will turn around pretty quick. Sometimes in a day, you know, uh, we'll issue a permit, so it's not really a, we don't have a thirty-day turnaround period, it's usually a few days.
So we'll keep it that way.
Well, we'll be able to, um, go from, right now, we're, we've, uh, moved towards just pushing papers across the desk rather than proactively managing the program.
Going out in the field.
So, yeah, so we're, we're not, uh, finding problems or doing the compliance inspections.
Yeah, two, two quick examples of, uh, a couple of years back, we allowed a contractor to shut, uh, s- s- shut down Chestnut Street for the Carolina Apartments renovation. And it stayed shut down and it stayed shut down and it stayed shut down. And I finally got a little irritated about it and started rattling Dave's cage about it and they just hadn't had the time to go back and monitor to make sure that they kept just half the street open as opposed to closing the old street. Very recently, right here on this corner, um, of Harnett and, um, front, yeah, thank you. Uh, Harnett and Front, there was a contractor that was working in the right-of-way and, and everybody kept riding by it every day and finally on the third day, I said, what's going on? And so, uh, I asked Tom, I think, and Tom asked Dave, went through the chain. Nobody even knew what they were doing out there and they were actually on the city property with heavy equipment and materials. And so it's just a matter of getting a handle back on, a- and had, and that, that worked out okay because it's city property, but had it been a private property owner, there could have been all sorts of damages and, and chain claims and counterclaims. So this is actually just gonna get us an opportunity to get out from behind the desk and monitor these situations a whole lot better. We just don't have the personnel to do it.
Park Avenue behind, shopping somewhere, but another purpose.
You got it.
Yeah, sir, it's, there's a lot of work in the city and not all, they're coming through our program, so.
So Dave, what, like, was scaffolding, um, to take the works and building to the airport? That scaffolding's been up there for, God, there's some of the, I think when I go back, I, I, I don't think I've ever seen anybody work on it, maybe they have.
I think it's, uh, mainly set up for safety for things falling off top of the buildings so that it doesn't hit anybody on the sidewalk.
So is that, I mean, how long does that last?
Uh, well.
I wanna go back to what you just said. You got stuff falling off the tops of the building. You have building inspection performance and you had a recount. And we're putting up a, a barrier there, so if something falls, I, I understand that, but don't you think they need to get it fixed? I'm not blaming you, but I'm just, I'm asking the question.
Well, I'll, I'll get an answer to exactly what's going on out there. I'm, I'm just basing this on what I knew about five years ago, something like that, where, where we had some, some issues with things hitting the sidewalk and up there, so I, I don't know the status of that particular thing. The last presentation I gave was on the fee schedule, which what we're doing in twenty twenty-five for the first time is having duration fees, so that right now, there's, there's no difference between building a driveway and doing that, it's, it's just an application fee, there's no fee for occupying it.
Does that scaffolding encroach in any way by air or physically on our?
Oh, yes, it occupies.
So does that permit have to continually be renewed? We had to allow them permission to do that.
We, we do have an expiration on our, so we will extend them, but.
Yeah. Thank you.
A permit can be revoked if needed. Uh, I revoke permits on the spot. McLean doing elevators for Cape Town Community College, they shut down Front Street. I wanted to put there on.
Yeah, that's a good one, sir.
Revoke their permit.
Just a bit.
On the other hand, there's the things that, uh, Tony is talking about, with the right-of-way permit management, there's a cost to achieve the core level of service that we're doing now is at a cost of pulling in construction inspectors off of public infrastructure construction, inspection duties. So that happens in capital projects, right-of-way permit and official acceptance, where you've got privately constructed public infrastructure that we officially accept. So I've got here just a summary of the last five years to show you the magnitude of what that is. This doesn't include the land easement values, this is just the infrastructure, so it's not a small matter to uh, accept all this, uh, Dave Mazes Group and Public Works is responsible for maintaining all this infrastructure in perpetuity. So we need to make sure that it's built properly, so we need to get those inspectors out looking at, um, the infrastructure construction so that when we're accepting it, you know, there's always a guarantee it's correct. And why is the position needed? This describes, uh, graphically what I was just talking about, where we've got construction inspectors who are being pulled into the office, to help with the paperwork. And, uh, that's a cost in itself to not have those inspectors in the field. And, and again, we're doing that and we're still achieving a, a substandard level of service.
David, is this in any way help, uh, with like, for example, the cross-city trail? With people in the city attorney's office doing the right-of-way permitting work, whatever, does this kind of work with them?
This is, this is, uh, later in the, uh, project pipeline that we've discussed before, so, uh, these inspectors will not advance the right-of-way acquisition work, but once it's done, these folks are there to make sure that if we've got an agreement with a property owner for something special on their property, that the inspectors are there, making sure that the property owners are, are aware that we're coming and that we're doing the work in accordance with what we've agreed in, in addition to putting in the pipe crackling or laying the asphalt, but like. And finally, this shows the, uh, the proposed situation where we've got an engineering associate added to that group. That is, uh, an engineering intern, that's the first stage of licensure for a professional engineer, so that person's got an engineering education and can, is, re- hesitant, um, yeah, I'm hesitant to, uh, draw an analogy to the TRC, but it's like a one-man TRC sort of, for this, where we get engineering plans in from utility companies, this person can independently review those under the responsible charge of a licensed professional engineer, which is Brett Russell.
Well, this is something that we in the city would wanna turn around as quickly as possible. I mean, no, no foot dragger laying on a desk, if you'd want it in and out, it's.
Yes, sir, yeah.
And part, part of the problem is that a few years back and probably more than a few years now, but, um, the state did away with the local government's ability to say yea or nay with regard to what goes in the state ran in the right-of-way. Now we can just permit it just so we know that it's there. Um, and so i- i- it's become a free-for-all, so to speak. And that's why so many of these, um, disturbances in the right-of-way really don't get caught because ain't nobody's out there and B, we don't have any sort of teeth in it to be able to enforce it.
We do hear conchance every once in a while. He reminded me of that. But it, it's basically complaint-driven responses that we're getting.
If I could just add, the emphasis council's placed on street improvement. We can pave a new road and not even be aware that some contractor's gone out and excavated in the new street and we're discovering them by accident, so we wanna be more on top of that. So it's really about protecting, protecting our assets. We had a call for someone in the hospital district that called us and said there was a hole in the sidewalk. Contractors, it's a state roadway seventeen sixteen. We don't even know that stuff. And, and if you've ever driven over a utility cut, you may get complaints from citizens, why don't somebody go in, put some rock in it? We need to go out and fill inspecting this stuff to make sure that we're restoring the conditions as quickly as possible, but also a problem.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Better flip these a- around because at the point Laura comes back up here, she's, uh, probably gonna be here for the duration, so I'm gonna ask if Rachel LaCoe will come forward and talk to us a little bit about the, uh, affordable housing general funds, uh, monies.
Thank you, I'm bringing Jennifer Moretti up as well.
You're gonna have to work over my stuff.
No problem. So this is showing, I'll let Jennifer kind of get into a little bit, but just, um, some of the money that has come in as well as some of the uses and the total available, so. Um, I just wanna kind of go through the chart that you're seeing here. Um, so if you look all the way to the right, that top, that says beginning balance. So the general fund has been, um, participating with the housing program, um, probably for more than thirty years, for as long as we've had the entitlement housing program. Um, and so part of that is there's a certain percentage of administrative fees for the staff working with the housing that, um, the entitlement funds cover, and so anything above that comes from general fund as well as different programs that, um, we can pursue with the community that does not have the number of restrictions that the entitlement, the federal funds have. Um, and so that beginning balance is what had, was remaining when we started, um, prior to FY twenty twenty. Um, and so twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one and, uh, twenty-two is where we had general funds on an annual basis, the city council had approved for additional funding from the general fund to come over to the housing programs to help, um, with these various programs. Um, in twenty-two, that was when we had the, uh, first um, one-time funds from the general fund fund balance of three and a half million to help with housing and gap financing projects, those larger ones. Um, and in, in twenty twenty-three, um, was another, uh, one point five million dollars that came from the general fund. Also in twenty twenty-three, council adopted a dedication of one cent of the tax rate to come over to the housing program. So that's why you're seeing on that first column, total general fund transfers, those are funds that are coming in from the general fund over to the housing program. And then that blue column is what those funds in those years were spent on. Um, and then the accumulative total there, that shows what we have left just from the general fund of eight point nine. Um, but I want to let Rachel explain, um, that's not just funds that are sitting there. Um, we do have applications and other things that they are vetting on their side. Um, how this program works is housing has staff and they review the applications that come in for our various programs and they help place the, uh, people requesting assistance or needing assistance in the various programs and see how we can best help them. Um, and then once they go through the process, they get approved and it becomes a loan. The finance staff then comes in and manages those loans that we have loans for, as well as does the, uh, financial reporting. So we, our staffs work very closely together on this program. Um, but I'll let Rachel go in more and talk about the different, um, the programs and what those funds are. Although it looks like eight point nine million dollars is a lot of money sitting there from the general funds and the housing, there are, um, needs out there that they are working through. Yes, so just in loans that we have, whether they are out for bid in the contracting for odor occupied rehab or some of our HOP pre-qualified, uh, owners as well as some of the applications that we have received for our rental rehab program, we do have about, mm, six billion dollars probably in that, those administrative costs as well as loans in the pipeline. In addition to that, uh, we have received letters of intent for some pretty large projects, uh, we're expecting those applications within the next month or so. That would be able to provide about three hundred and fifty units of affordable housing ranging from thirty percent AMI up to eighty percent AMI. And so those are some of those bond projects that we don't see as often, those four percent low income housing tax credit. Those do require a deeper subsidy similar to Starway Villages. And that is where you'll see layering, uh, layering from the city, from potentially the county, potentially the endowment, and of course the state and to help make those numbers work.
Is project two and above the Starway project?
Yeah, so what you're seeing on this, uh, spend down is fiscal year twenty and twenty-one was a light year of general funds, interest rates were pretty reasonable and low during those times, so we didn't see a need or there were, a lot of our residents did not see a need for our programs, whether it's our HOP mortgage, it wasn't as competitive as the open market during those times. We saw an increase during, um, starting in twenty-two, as well as we were putting out a lot of ARPA and COVID money during that time. And, you know, there's a lot of projects going out at that time in a mix of the CDBG home and general funds.
So that's six million dollar number that we tossed out a minute ago, that's, that's, those are committed funds that will, that will reduce this eight million nine hundred twenty-two thousand nine hundred forty-one dollar surplus by six, roughly six million that are committed from the city of Wilmington currently.
I, I wanna be careful with my language of committed and Jennifer, you can correct me.
Cause I know there's, there's nine million dollars LOI, but that's, I mean, we all know LOI is not a, not a commitment, but I wanna talk about the committed funds.
When we look at that, that's looking at when we pre-qualify our HOP buyers, we, our HOP, our homeowner, homeowner occupa- uh, homeowner opportunity program. And so that is when we do that second mortgage and down payment assistance. We don't like to pre-qualify folks if we don't have money because we don't want someone to, you know, go to purchase a home and then find out the bank has out of money. And so, uh, we tend, while we say we have those pre-qualified, our budget tends to be about one point four million dollars between federal and local dollars for those programs. So while we say that those are committed in a way, it's because they're pre-qualified. Um, so that's just, I just wanted to kind of be that caveat.
But that total was six million.
So we have six million in HOP applications.
Uh, no, that's a mix of HOP, uh, our own owner occupied rehab program, our rental rehab program. And so that, those are.
But those are applications that are, that the city has.
Received.
Received. And these individuals either own homes that they're getting a second mortgage on or they are using us as financing to purchase.
Order rehab.
Order rehab.
So the second mortgage program is we partner with banks and it's, it's, um, purchasing for first-time home buyers. So it's not that we're adding a second mortgage, it's how they're able to do that.
But those, those individuals, that's six million dollars, they are actively.
Searching for homes.
Searching for homes, within what price range?
Under three hundred and, uh, twenty-five. And so the way that we're able, yes. And so we have a program where it's a HOP rehab program where we are able to go in. Um, we actually have a beautiful case that we'll be, uh, sharing with you as we go through this, where it was a former code enforcement house and somebody is going to be purchasing that. They're pairing it with our rehab program, so they are able to go into a house that is not meeting the minimum housing code standards, it's not something that is maybe desirable for a lot of people, we're able to go in, do that rehab work, and then they're able to purchase it. And so it's a, it's a great example and it's all a loan, so all of that money is going to be reinvested back into future projects.
So you, you tossed out a number of about three hundred and fifty units?
A few minutes ago, Rachel, but we're not talking about another Starway type development. We're talking about stuff scattered all around.
Potentially two large projects, uh, at like a hundred ninety units in one, about a hundred and twenty five of subsidized with other uh market rate included in that.
Have we, has this been brought?
No, they're, they have not.
We're, we're just working one.
They'll, they'll be submitting for planning in the next few weeks.
Rachel, we, we, at least I'm hearing that we're beginning to see a lot of more tax credit developers that are scouring the area, looking in this marketplace because of the commitment from the city and county regards for housing, is that?
Absolutely. Uh, I think Starway really opened a lot of people's eyes to see that. Uh, uh, just like economic development, we're open for business. And in this sense, we are open for business for these affordable housing developers. That's not possible to do it without some sort of subsidy um at any level. And so a lot of the larger cities and counties that receive entitlement money in much larger amounts than we do are able to pair uh their their subsidy differently than we are. And so, yes, that we are getting a lot more calls from outside of the local area, larger developers that um work in other communities or from other communities that are coming here.
What what changed in North Carolina housing finance and development over the years? Because is is it because of gap financing on the, on the this end? Or I mean, did they change their way of looking at it? Because if we were lucky, I mean, if we were lucky, New Hanover County maybe get one tax credit financing per year. Sometimes we'd go two and three years without, and now it seems like you're talking to floodgates are open.
So what's interesting is we, that's the nine percent, and this is a lot, sorry. Uh, but the nine percent projects is where you're getting that competitive grant process. And that's where we were lucky to get one. And as a, we are just, we're not an urban county or city, um, we're not considered one of the metro. So we are limited to one, except for the years we've had hurricane bonuses where we got two. And so they are competitive, it's an expensive process to go through and you're not guaranteed. So we don't see a lot of applications. We're seeing a lot of developers shift to that four percent bond project, which is what Starway, Cypress Cove, um, I think Margaret North.
What is four percent?
How much tax credit you get. And so when you have that smaller amount of tax credits, that's where you need that deeper subsidy. And that's where we're seeing a lot more um layering. That's where we're seeing people apply for the county funding, for the endowment funding uh for the community development block grant disaster relief as in Starway that we applied for to help plug that hole. And so that subsidy gap is higher in those projects. So as we see more of these larger projects, we're going to see more requests.
Which are interesting comment, you said that we're not looked at as an urban.
Yeah.
Type, so I, I guess I'd like to see a list of those of the cities that they have identified. Cause I believe that Wilmington is the third most um populated city per square mile in the state of North Carolina, and I can't understand why that.
Yeah, it's.
Who identifies that? Who, who, who rates that?
It's by county, and so New Hanover County is not an urban county because the population outside of any of the incorporated cities is not over two hundred thousand. So to be considered an urban county by HUD definition, the unincorporated population has to be over two hundred thousand.
With the.
So we're too small, believe it or not.
Like Wade, Orange County, Becklinburg.
Yes.
Go on.
So that's why New Hanover County does not receive HUD entitlement bonds because of their size.
Because of the unincorporated areas that have two hundred thousand, they have maybe a hundred some thousands, but they were, so interesting.
For the locations that are getting an apple second, this project, do they get it? I mean, it'll vary obviously, but.
I'd have to look. Um, I I'll have to look at that. I'm not sure. Yeah, we have the list.
Along those lines, it's not just money you can do the incentive. I've worked with North Carolina housing finance. It could be land from the city, some cities through utilities. But the this essence of it is to subsidize non, non-market rent, it's gotta be something that fills in the gap to make the numbers work.
And I do want to point out that.
We're saying that fifty years.
So our gap financing for us is really what's opening the door.
I was going to add that what has also changed over the past few years is updates to the LDC that have also incentivized. So it's not just the financial incentives that were seen, but some of these regulatory incentives are helping make these projects more feasible from a planning and development standpoint, so.
So Rachel, let's just take your question for example, that I mean, the housing authority has been talking about redevelopment, that's how it's twenty four acres and talking about adding additional density there. We could use this topic, this funding to help that private entity or whoever it's in contract out with to do that.
Absolutely. And that's, you know, another source of layering that I didn't even get into is some of the housing authority adding some of those vouchers to some of these projects helps uh get their costs and numbers down as well.
So we're pretty much, once we've allocated the funding, the incorporated funding, you're pretty much a year, a year of these most of.
That's my goal.
It's nine million dollars. There's six million committed, so there's three million that's that's left over, but there's nine million and in in LOIs floating out there. Who the hell knows, sorry, who knows what, you know, what the reality holds and where they could even be built.
Yeah, and you're getting some money back also from the revolving, I mean revolving.
Yes, and.
Make a loan, they paying us back and then put that back into.
Right, that goes back into these programs and those are reflected.
Yeah, so some of that total balance includes some of those revolving loans that come in every year.
I know that Starway came back with and asked us for additional funding because of the interest rate. Then there was another project that we had um annexed to the city with seventy two units of senior housing near Ogden. Did they come back also? I I understood that there was going to be.
They did not come back.
The, the, there was one in Ogden, they went to the county for some additional funding, but the one in Sterling Reserve, they did come back. That was a, a couple of meetings ago that we brought forward that um, that was again due to the tax credit sales are lower. Um, and so they're not selling for what we thought they would be. And then we are also seeing the interest rate changes again, so it's harder to lock in.
So, so the two projects that potentially are going to be coming forward, you said a hundred ninety units and a hundred and twenty seven meters. And you feel that they're going to be making some application here in foreseeable future. You feel very comfortable on that?
I do.
That's pretty significant uh affordability, those numbers.
It is. I think that Tom and I were discussing that probably between Starway and these potential two projects, we're going to be adding more units than we have added in what, twenty, thirty years, uh, just with this.
Wouldn't cause a wouldn't desire there or or trying to be creative with our money or somebody else's money.
How much cash did the city expend for getting the Starway project online?
That was all ARPA and funding, and so that was uh about three point five the first.
Yeah, uh, so the city and county contributed um ARPA funding um to it. And then they came back and needed additional funding. And so I think we allocated another um five hundred or seven fifty thousand to to that, as well as the county added additional funding. Um, and then they've got additional funding from the state um and the reasons, as Rachel mentioned, as those interest rates continue to go up. Um, it it prevents their um investment from working, from the project from working with their financials. And so to get this, we came back with more.
So not ARPA funding, but actual dollars from the, from the city, it was seven hundred fifty thousand. That is reflected in what, twenty two? No, that would be twenty three.
Twenty three.
And then the remaining portion was some, was the uh, adding the HOP programs and um, then we had the one other uh senior.
The Canopy Point.
Right, how much did we spend on that?
That was one point eight five.
What was that?
Canopy Point in Ogden.
So one point eight five seven fifty, that gets us to that two point, two point three. Thanks.
But the policy does work.
It just, you know, with regard to, thank God for people like Ted Hillbron, the, the ramrodded that deal out there. Uh, I got quite an education from him over the many lunches we had together about Starway. But speed is is critical in getting these things past all, you know, the scrutiny. Because while they're sitting there doing that, costs are going up, construction, interest rates, and boy, that's some big dollars. So lesson to be, not learned, we all know it.
The old adage, I've killed all deals.
Well, the two prospects that Rachel mentioned, both are experienced, highly experienced, they have credibility in this community. They've got to walk through some issues, whether it be access for the site or zoning, but as you said, they'll be coming forward publicly.
It doesn't make sure of uh market rate and uh. And affordability is low as thirty percent.
Yes, absolutely. So the way that these four percent projects work, they have to be located in qualified census tracts to really make the numbers. And so it's, it's a balance of where they're going to be located. It's a game, like you said, time is of the essence, as you know, when properties come up, being able to act on them quickly.
Well, barring on my experience with dealing with tax credits, there, there was a very strict criteria that these sites had to meet. Bus routes, access to medical, shopping, uh, you know, transportation or whatever. So I would assume that some of those things are still in place. So that, that rules out a lot of random land out there that we don't have a hell of a lot of anywhere. So glad we were, glad they were, they were looking for it. Any questions? Look, did you present a question?
We got Laura up, she wants to direct a question on the police. A question we're going to ask about.
I, we do have a friend misunderstanding about affordable housing, that six million that was mentioned is not.
Sorry. The six million dollars, what?
Is not a hundred percent of that eight point nine million dollars. It's a mixture of the eight point nine and the federal funding.
Well, what, what's, what's the mixture?
I'll get that.
That's, I'd like to know that before we leave today.
Luke, you had asked why uh the chief's salaries increased by about thirty three percent. We pull salary saving or a snapshot of all of our physicians had a certain point in time in police and other departments moved their staffs on. So it's literally just snapshot in time, and if we can find those during the process, we will lose on where they need to be, but we just, this year.
Thank you. The, the chief, chief called me about that and that basically I think critically wrong chief, but the um. Yeah, the homeless outreach unit was under your office and then now it's moved over to special ops.
Is something you're going to say, or are you waiting for us to?
She, she's waiting on me to chime in. I was making sure everybody got their notes down. Uh, we want to return to the discussion of the safe light uh that uh, what L brought up. Uh, this is a uh five year contract that was five plus year contract that was entered to in twenty twenty. Um, and it is, uh, and and who's here for legal? Well, I'm gonna, I stayed at a Holiday Inn last night, so I'm, I'm going to practice, I'm going to practice some law. Uh, but this all is subject to review by, by uh, legal counsel. But the contract, as I read it, was in, entered into in twenty twenty. Uh, it expires in June of twenty twenty five. Uh, it allocates a number of cameras, I believe thirteen, is Dennis here?
It's fifteen.
Thirteen. Um, and uh, the, the cost is uh prorated based upon if the city chooses not to pay um for the, the lease of the cameras. In other words, it's a fifty five month pro- uh process during which the, the, i- if we discontinue use of the cameras and no longer pay for them, we will be subject to a penalty that is based upon a, a number divided by fifty five months. Um, so we are obligated, and I do not believe there is a non-appropriation clause. Again, all of this is subject to legal's uh review, and we would need to make sure that, that, that my amateurish uh review of it is, is correct. Um, but uh, so we do believe that if you chose to um get out of the contract uh with the beginning of the current fiscal year, there would be a payback period. And we've estimated that that payback may be more than the two hundred and thirty five thousand dollars that we would have to pay uh in keeping that contract.
So it expires on the seventh, uh, what?
In June of twenty twenty five.
And then what kind of a um, what kind of a notification period do you have to give them?
There is no notification.
Twenty twenty five, you can go away and then you don't have to do anything.
There is a provision in the contract that you can do a mutual termination uh between the vendor and us. Uh, and I don't, we have not explored that at all with regard to termination.
I, I jumped into it a little bit um last night. Uh, and I found that Wilmington is the only city in North Carolina that still utilizes the Safe Life program. Uh, Raleigh terminated their program twenty three, Fayetteville in twenty twenty two, and Greenville in twenty twenty two as well. Do we know if they uh rolled up to the end of their terms and didn't renew, or if they terminated?
I have no idea.
Personally, yeah, I mean, I've, I've advocated about this program for a while, um, and I think we should get rid of it because it's a loser. Um, but I think it'd be really helpful to know, I mean, if Raleigh was able to terminate and maybe talk to attorneys, talk to attorneys and.
We, we can, we can explore all that. As I said, we were working up till six o'clock last night, and I finally told Laura, quit sending stuff out until this morning, when I told her to send the packet out. Uh, but we need to have Sean.
Sure, we'll check on it.
And, and his, his crew look over it. Uh, and then we can also check with um those, those entities that rolled out of the contracts, what their contracts looked like, what vendors they started with, what vendors they were with when they terminated. Because these are like cable companies, people start the companies up and they get bought out. Um, and garbage service and stuff like that, they just get bought out. So uh, we would have to make sure the vendors were the same. There's, there's a great deal of information that we don't have at this point.
With attorney, the, which boy, it, it obviously would, would subsidize. I mean, I would like to see what the cost benefit is to us from a safety perspective, if there is a. And then number two, um, if the county wanted to continue on with the program for their schools, schools, they could also do so if we were to walk away from it, correct?
The county could not operate the system, but they could subsidize our cost in the system.
Okay, well, that's another point. And then the number three thing is, um, I, I guess I would have to ask the chief to evaluate this is is there any benefit in keeping them for public safety purposes, where we have solved crimes using camera systems? And it's more prevalent that we've been using cameras, solve these crimes, because a lot of people are not going to come forward and tell you anything. And I know a couple of characters that we've caught in murder situations have been caught because of the camera system. So I'd like to see what that cost benefit is there. Is it, is it beneficial to you, chief, and the department, keep the cameras there for some, for, for public safety purposes more than any?
Well, to answer your first question, uh, Nick, would you stand up? Nick started out with us as an intern from UNCW. He is now employed with us uh in the budget department. So I want to, I just wanted to cite something that Nick has done for us. Nick is an intern, did a study for us and did an analysis of uh crashes uh at red light intersections versus uh non-red light intersections. And essentially the bottom line on the, on the study is there makes, it makes very little difference. Um, and so from a safety standpoint.
You're looking at, at the, at results with the red light, with the uh safe light in place.
Yep.
So I uh did a full program evaluation of the red light cameras that airing the intersections, a few intersections that have them compared to those to those that do not. Uh, and then also before and after for a couple of intersections.
That's what we got in November?
No, that's.
No, he wrote that for your capstone MPA problem.
Yep.
I saw it all linked in.
That's great. Thank you.
So essentially from a safety standpoint, it is a negligible at best um uh instrument. Uh, we did ask the chief to uh go back and look at it from a crime standpoint. Chief, do you want to?
Yeah, sure.
Give us a little bit of information about that, please.
We've used it in three hundred and sixteen total cases, just to give you an example, we started eating apart way from twenty twenty one. Um, we pulled a hundred and twenty five videos that year that tied the cases, um, twenty twenty two, three hundred and seventy seven videos that tied the cases. Twenty twenty three, four hundred and fourteen videos, and so far this year, a hundred and thirty six. Thirteen of those videos have been attributed to homicide cases. Um, we've had um videos assault with deadly weapon cases, robbery, breaking and entering, hitting runs, the full gamut. Not only have these videos benefited the Wilmington Police Department, but the entire region. Um, we've had eight other law enforcement agencies where we've shared these videos with, to help them. Um, we've had eight other law enforcement agencies where we've shared these videos with, to help them in their cases, to include one of our three level um federal partners. So I think it's invaluable to have cameras at these intersections. Um, we didn't realize this until twenty twenty one that these cameras, they actually record twenty four hours a day, even um when you don't run a red light. And it has been very valuable um for us. One of the drawbacks to it is not a real time tool. So we have to go back in time and um get the videos, but they have just been so instrumental in helping us solve cases.
What I've told, what I've told the chief is if um council chooses to move forward with discontinuing um the red light cameras. That we would have to investigate the installation of um regular cameras at these thirteen intersections, uh hopefully thereby reducing costs.
That was my big hurdle, my big number not wanting to push it too hard with regards to getting discontinued the safe light programs, because I know it is a valuable tool. For for W WPD. But if we got a quarter of a million dollars that we're saving year over year, I I feel like we could probably buy thirteen to or more cameras. And put them up in some places that are dedicated expressly to uh to law enforcement.
Yes, in real time would be very beneficial.
Then then to your system, right? But.
Well, that's that's not cheap either.
No, I I have no idea.
Because we 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 covered this ground, trying to put cameras around out of a high school pattern. It was more than just placing a camera on the pole. When that, when that system was put in, we had probably thirty percent less traffic on our roads than we do now. We didn't have Independence Boulevard wasn't in place. Uh, we had a lot of improvements. Traffic has increased. We had intersections that were deadly. Uh, some of those intersections aren't even there now because the way the new road system has been configured. But they work. Uh, and some of those most deadly intersections went right off the 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 charts after six or eight weeks of people getting tickets. I said to manager, married one to, got one at Seventeenth and Chippy Yarn. I said, what'd you think? She said, I paid the damn thing. It it's a simple fine. It's not a criminal fine. And, you know, if I'm I'm a little, this, I'm, what I would like to see your study encompass, Nick, would be. Not, not what the 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 stats show now in place with the cameras in place, but perhaps go to those three cities, Greenville, Raleigh. Who is thirdly, Fayetteville, and see what the the impact was after the system was dismantled. And see if 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 it, you know, the the red crack crashes ramp back up or whatever. That would be a, you know, a statistic I'd be interested in seeing. And I wasn't aware that that the the chief relied on that so heavily. Um, I know we had nothing but negative comments every time somebody gets a ticket. Or not every time, but they'll call and say, that wasn't me, I wasn't in the car, whatever, blah, blah, blah. But that camera, I mean, it zeros right in on the car, the tag, everything. It's, it works. Uh, and in the beginning, Honest Engine back in the nineties, we thought we we had a million dollar revenue source. And then we found out short order that that wasn't true. We had to give it to the school board. So we've subsidized it all these years and, you know, kind of neutral on it. Uh, if everybody says it's not working. But the chief just brought up a great point. I mean, that's, if we could replace that with cameras that were less expensive or less expensive to operate, that'd be the way to go.
Tony.
What, excuse me, Kevin, I've got some light, and then I'll go to you.
So we.
Oh, thanks, Mr. Mayor.
We talked about um back in November about what this would be to be cost neutral. And I think I heard that the fine will send me two hundred and twenty five dollars, something like that.
Well, I don't want the oldest counsel to leave that.
No, I I know it's always been fifty, but that's why it's losing money, because we can actually charge whatever we want for the sake of it.
I mean, I think we have discretion in the amount. It's just we don't have control over the amount goes.
But we have to. There is an amount that would that would that would stop the bleeding. There is an amount that would make this cost neutral program, right?
Make that ten percent that we're allowed to keep to administrate it. But yeah, that I'm not that person, but I see where you're.
I thought I heard the number two hundred and twenty five dollars. And that sounds really high, but we only incur costs when.
You can pay it.
When people pay it.
The collection rate is already relative, or the uh, the collection rate is already relatively low at fifty dollars. I'm sure it would escalate.
I don't know that it would make a difference, honest honestly. I don't know if it would make a difference. People are gonna ignore a fifty dollar ticket. They're gonna ignore it too. And 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 the same people who would pay a fifty dollar ticket would pay a two hundred and twenty five dollar ticket, I think.
I think.
I don't.
But even if you had drop off, it wouldn't matter because we only pay when we collect, right?
We actually, it's actually more affordable of a program when people don't pay.
I know. I just said that without saying.
I think we'll just leave the damn signs up. Mr. Spears.
Yeah, um, I'm hearing a lot of conversation around safe light, but. Have we reached out to any representatives from safe light? Are we getting their perspective? Are we talking about restructuring the deal, negotiating uh the fact that we're taking a loss? Because from from what I hear from the chief, uh, and and just not based on what the the chief, but also what the mayor is saying. And and the data that's been provided to us since Luke brought up this, you know, this piece of, you know, us taking a loss. It's provided some safety and and some comfort in the city of Wilmington, as as far as people running lights and. Accidents and things of that nature, but I'm I'm not hearing anything from safe lights. I would love to hear what they have to say.
We we can certainly enter into discussions with them, uh, if that's counsel's desire.
Well, I don't know how we got this deep in a rabbit hole and hadn't heard a damn thing from safe light, part of my friends.
Well, I tell you, from my perspective, that what um chief has shared with me personally, that we're in this group. To have that many crimes that you have been able to um solve or. You know, get the information necessary for the convictions for homicides to to robberies is invaluable. And if you put that up against the amount of time that we take to apprehend those folks, detectives and policing and having eyes everywhere. Like it's the one that's do, when they have something, but they break into their car or to their home, how come we don't have somebody there? That's invaluable to me. I I, there's not even a cost you can put to it. As far as.
I would agree.
And that's to me, uh, now, it's it's kind of shifted the focus from crashes to solving crimes. Which still goes back to a public safety aspect. And going to loot boy, if you can do it for cheaper. And you can do it with a safe life, but have the cameras in real life, with the real time, I think is great. But. I'm gonna say this, every time we talk about that, you come get back, you guys come back to us in six months. So by the way, I've got to tell you, this is costing way more. It's taking more time. We don't have the fiber optics there. We've got issues with this. We got issues with that. That's my concern.
Yes, sir.
So you already have a system that's up. It's costing you two hundred, yes. But is it doing the job necessary, not only for 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 the crashes, but also more importantly, solve crime? Because this is where it's going. I I I that's at least what I've been sharing. You you know, some of the stuff that you've shared with me over time, that we've got to have just more eyes out there. And this is solving crime. You're in the, you're in the DA's office, and you see it every single day.
Yeah, Lu- Luke asked me if I see cases from this. Based on my caseload, I would not be looking at cases that would have traffic cameras really involved in them too terribly much. Um, he may have seen the notes that I wrote, and so my question is about the in car cameras. That's a little bit different, but I don't know too terribly much about how we use these.
I I like the um, I like the idea of um refunding it, and the reason being, again, going with the public safety piece. Um, as well as another thought, um, the proceeds, the the extra money that we get, it goes to the school system, correct?
Ninety ninety percent of it.
Nine percent, okay. And I guess with all the challenges that they're having, um, they would, I would, I would imagine they would hate to lose that amount as well. But more importantly, I think it's almost like having, in my mind, um, having your security at home, and you got the system already set up. You know, and, you know, you need that security, and I think it's really good for the safety of the people. Um, so I would, I would like to see us keep it. At least finally, we can do it better.
Could we also, when we're we're kind of looking at this, I mean, it may be dead in the water, but um I have some concerns about the constitutionality of it. And why, that may be why Raleigh, Fayetteville, and Greenville terminated, because they were concerned.
Oh, my God.
With receiving uh lawsuits based on the constitutionality. Uh, whether or not that's why they terminated, but if if we have contacts there that we could reach out to potentially in legal office, I think that's a.
And it's been tested over the years, and since nineteen ninety eight, it's been tested numerous of times. I'm just. Background.
I thought we got tested on that one, too.
I I there's there, and and Sean, I don't know if you're familiar with.
It's still been named.
But you're right.
The the difficulty is for a plaintiff to get it from the superior court to the court of appeals, but as soon as you find some, as soon as you find a judge who will. Let you use that mechanism, as soon as the court appeals takes it, I think the dominoes start.
So some of these other organizations are being getting out ahead of it before the dominoes fall.
Nothing changes the fact that that damn picture's an eight by eleven, and it shows your car in the middle of a busy intersection on a red light. That's where the rubber meets the road, in my opinion. Those T intersections, intersections, wrecks are the most deadly of all. And we have cut back drastically on those intersections. And one of the problems I've always had in red light, safe light, is moving them around. That's a shocking act of conduct. So I I I'm either way on it with what the chief said, the daycare is more with me.
Yes, I I can comment on at least Greenville in in this context. When I worked there as assistant city manager, I led the initiative to put fiber optic, recommend a fiber rings. City on fiber. And one of the tools that we had was we put cameras in intersections. Police used them then, when I was there. And in the manner that Donnie said, it was Chief Anderson's. The benefit for us is we're pushing out just fiber to all our public sites. Hundred and twenty something cameras by the time I left there. So in essence, Greenville doesn't need a red light camera to get this data. But we had to invest in a dark fiber ring, and we've worked with other governmental agencies to have that ring around the city. Uh, but it wasn't cheap. So I mean, you have to make the investment. So in in some ways, the red light camera is doing for us what. Such well, it would.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Uh. You made a good point about what we've seen um as far as the infrastructure. So, you know, we we can't run out the Ollies and get some cameras and stick them up all around Wilmington and think that we'll get the same same protection. As safe light provides to us. And also, no knock on our IT team or or what we've been doing as an organization, but you're right. There there have been plenty of instances where we made changes or done something, and then we have to come back later and say, hey, oh, we forgot this. And we've done this, and the amount has grown over time, or we left out a piece of 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 something that's very vital to this. Thing working the way that it needs to work. So, I mean, again, it goes right back, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Is is a drop in the bucket compared to public safety and and what it may cost us in the long run. So I I just don't think we need to change it. If we could talk to Safe Light, if we could restructure it. Or just have some type of negotiation, I think we need to do that first before we jump the gun.
Can we also evaluate if we do, we uh do away with the safe life, or if we live, uh, can this would cost would be.
Yes, sir, we will. And and that will be one of the things that I would.
That's that's worth looking at, sorry.
I'm not certain that we can accomplish that within the next thirty days.
I understand, just, but I think that with this contract.
Renewal.
Yeah, I think it's time to at least divest you of that, and just. Because this, this thing may have. But that's course, but maybe this, the 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 crashes, but it's definitely paying dividends on solving problems, that's the means of making it. But I mean, they're both important. And and maybe the safe light panel's challenge point has changed to be some of these folks running red lights. I know I'm 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 much more aware of it. Running the red light's not a constitutional right, you know? Okay. Questions?
That concludes uh what we had in terms of presentations associated with questions that you had asked.
Well, um, Dylan, I think I sent you something, I'm not pulling it up. Um, and and let me just preface this with, I, I've been, I guess this is only. Third budget season, this budget season. So I always have a lot of thoughts, and I find it helpful just to put them into a one sheet here. And um bring them up and and walk them through, so before my colleagues get their pitchforks out and run me out of the room to this proposal for discussion.
Okay, can we take a five minute, Blair?
Pitchfork is already out.
It always is.
We've printed out these and had a place that you're. Yeah, Councilman, what else?
Okay, yeah, all right. So this is going to be a fairly informal presentation, but I. Really, for me, it was easier to kind of put all my thoughts on one sheet of paper, I thought probably. Better for this body as well, um, rather than just kind of tossing them out throughout a meeting and dragging it on. So I'm gonna walk through it uh really quick, but just again to preface, uh, this is proposals of uh that I think do warrant discussion. With the uh. Seven percent tax increase that's that we're kind of staring down the barrel of, I thought it was incumbent upon us to pursue some austerity measures. Um, on behalf of the folks that we represent, at least have those discussions uh as we're putting in, and how to how to. Keep those at bay best we can. Um, and some of these may not be feasible, uh, and I'm glad we have everybody here. We can, don't make them crazy. First, uh, jump into the motor vehicle uh tax that's been proposed. I think we were talking about raising it from five to fifteen dollars and then slowly bringing it up there. I consider this a user fee. Um. And I think the five to fifteen was going to generate nine hundred thousand dollars in revenue. And so my thought was, if you take it, go ahead, just take it to thirty. Um, would that generate one point eight? I understand from Councilman Joyner that perhaps we can't go to thirty. There may be some.
We go to twenty five.
Go to twenty five. So one, whatever that, um, still generates some revenue. Ultimately, my thought would be to eliminate the proposed neighborhood traffic calming program, while I do think it's a worthwhile initiative. Um, while we are staring down the barrel of the tax increases and also the the major capital improvements that we have. Um, in this budget for for the foreseeable future, maybe dedicating this one point, whatever that number would be at at twenty five dollars. Uh, dedicating that transportation related capital improvements, unless we are hamstrung to be able to do that. Uh, that's one item for discussion. I'm gonna run through all of it, and then if council wants to discuss or deliberate any of these items individually, we can um after that. Next would be the Affordable Housing Fund. Um, we received that presentation. Uh, again, worthwhile initiative, uh, but. Would advocate for removing the dedicated one cent for affordable housing and reallocating that two point nine eight, two hundred and forty one back to the general fund. That presentation that there's currently a nine million dollar surplus. I understand that it's really probably more of a, I'll call it three to five million dollar surplus. Uh, because we're still waiting on hearing those numbers. With the six million dollars that's committed, and the portion of that is federal fund, so it's not, um. It's probably less than six million dollars. Uh, and then if there's specific, I still think, I mean, council's initiative to uh. Leverage our dollars for with gap financing is is worthwhile and important to our community. So if specific gap financing opportunities did arise outside of this surplus. Bring it to council for deliberation and to potentially fund out a fund balance if we if we can. Uh, we already talked about the Safe Light program, so I'm not gonna belabor that point. Uh, first, the Equity Inclusion DEI program, uh, advocate discontinuing that program and reallocating. I I had a two hundred and sixty two thousand nine seventy four. That's a twenty five thousand dollar DEI training line item. And the total DEI budget for that two sixty two nine seventy four number, reallocating those funds to both Wilmington Police Department and Wilmington Fire Department budgeted needs that they have already. Within this budget, uh, advocate for removing the potential fund of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, and that's just really an austerity measure. There's specific program, like specific items, one time that will come up, take a look at that. Um, and then I summarize. All of that at the bottom, obviously, those numbers are going to flux just a little bit because of the twenty five dollar, rather. all of that at the bottom, obviously those numbers are going to flux just a little bit because of the twenty-five dollar, rather than thirty dollar motor vehicle tax allowance that we, that we can do. But ultimately buys down that increase by uh minimum quarters of that too. That's it.
Did the council continue, may I?
Yes.
The council contingency fund, would you delve into that just to clear?
The council contingency, there is, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to look out there, I think it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for economic development. So if something came to the council, you will have the opportunity to move it for that. And then there's an additional hundred thousand dollars for anything else that may come up.
What?
Just for anything else the council wants to spend it on, you know, there's just cool money for you.
I think the guard rail in Greenville came from council contingencies.
But in the course of the year, you're going to have some, some something that's going to come up, but it will come up to one of us that will come, uh, and that individual council member can bring it forward, city judge can really support um, something that was not, something that we could use this money for, um, if that happens. If you sit over and use for different, right, things that have been abused, and it always has to come before the governing body for
That is the one thing, anything spent out of contingency has to come before the governing body.
So it'll be the same as fund balance, really?
Time fund balance.
Yeah.
Um, I'm, I'm not done. I would like to ask if, based on our sales tax collections for the, for the previous fiscal year, what would the increase be this year based on the, the higher tax rate? I mean, it, it's got to be significant. I know that's not math that you can do sitting here at the table, but that's, that's going to be something that I never see factored in like additional revenue. It also won't show up until, I understand that.
Ten months in the fiscal.
I'm saying what would it be based on last year's collections?
Yeah, we'll run that for you like Mr. Cottle said, it, it won't impact the next fiscal year twenty-five until May and June.
This is my point. I, I'm, I'm not saying plug it in.
Right.
I'm just saying, what would that number, we know what it was, well, we will know what it is because we've worked in a rearage on it, so I understand that. But you know, get back to twenty twenty-two, I don't care. Based on what we collected in the preview, the most previous year that we have all the collections, what would the delta be based on that tax rate at that time versus the tax rate for pedestrians today?
Yeah, we'll run that, um, assuming that no other entities, the county or any of the other beach communities change their tax rate, we can run it based on a prior year with this increase in the tax rate and the capital generation.
Still, this is my point. I don't care what the county did or anybody did, what were our collections then? If the county, I think they're talking about what I said. I'm not a hundred percent sure, but whatever, whatever the difference would be, whatever we've got coming to us from the state, what would that number be? That would be kind of significant, I would think. Okay, the, the questions are, thank you. Because that is, that is not bound money, but it's money that's not, I've not seen plugged into any forecast, okay?
I, I realize I'm kind of springing this on everyone, but I finished it up late yesterday evening, but I do have some questions for staff with regards to motor vehicle. If we were to eliminate the neighborhood traffic calming, traffic calming program, is there anything that prohibits us from being able to dedicate that money that would be generated um, to transportation related capital improvements that are already laid out in our, in our budget?
No, sir.
Can, um, with, can somebody? Can someone tell me a little bit more about the, um, proposed labor and traffic calming program? Um, what is that?
Well, we get complaints from different neighborhoods. I can think of many around the university off of Wrightsville Avenue, we're asking for traffic calming um, at infrastructure over the years. Uh, it gives us the ability to be able to go in there and put in those, um.
Wait, generally speaking, first of all, you'll recall that there is a strong emphasis on neighborhoods in your strategic plan. Um, one of the emphasis that I make with new employees is the diversity of this community in forty-three different neighborhoods, forty-three, all forty-three of which expect some sort of different treatment. There are issues regarding speeding in, um, several neighborhoods throughout the city. And we don't have enough police officers to be able to put, um, a traffic cop out on, on these streets to be able to keep the speed down. So we would offer the idea that there's structural improvements that can be made to the street that will visually tell the driver that they need to slow down. That can be putting, uh, can be something as simple as striping bike lanes on the side of the road or something as simple as putting a, a median uh in the middle of the road at a certain point. Uh, there are various opportunities to treat each neighborhood differently based upon what fits for their neighborhood. Um, and so the idea was to put this money back in place so that we could A, identify what was appropriate for each neighborhood and B, try to slow the traffic down. We have a, a large number of pedestrian vehicle bicycle uh accidents that go on, especially on local streets. Uh, uh, Mary Vigia was just talking about the fact she didn't want to ride on Carolina Beach Road last night at six o'clock. And first thing I thought was you taking your life on, uh, in your hands on any road. And, and as a cyclist, I say that. Um, but the point being is that you, uh, have a different treatment for each neighborhood. And it's certainly, uh, when it comes to a speed issue, it's not a matter of being able to put a police officer out there.
Okay, cool. And what is actually proposed in that amount? What, what was proposed?
The proposal right now for the amount of money that you have, that you're proposing for this particular budget.
It's, it's fifteen, it, it would go from five to fifteen dollars, would create about nine hundred thousand dollars worth of revenue. And we would propose to hire two positions associated with that. One would be a planner slash grants seeker administrator, and the other one was an engineering position.
Okay, cool. All right, thank you.
Well, again, I, I commend the, the foresight on this, on this program. I think it's worthwhile. I'll have that very clear. It's important we all get those calls from our neighborhoods, but we have so much on our plate from a capital improvement standpoint. If we can dedicate a revenue source to that without adding a new, uh, a new program or new department with, with a couple of staff members, I think it warrants discussion on, on how do you utilize that money.
That's right. When, when, when the speed humps were in vogue, everybody wanted them, and they're not in vogue anymore. I know that some people who are still draft complained recently about when we refoot the humps back in, they weren't tall enough. Well, they weren't as tall as they were before, and they're not. I rode across to see and they're not. But speed humps don't generally work. People go to the speed hump, go across and then they allow a better word, they, they take off like a jackrabbit to get to the next one. It's Christian way to put it. The, the greatest, the greatest traffic caller I've ever seen is Brick Street. It just automatically slows you down. Are we going to put brick streets everywhere in the, but squeezers, uh, those, there's things besides speed that's at work. But I have a lot of people talking, we get one of those signs out here that shows people's speed to remind them. And I don't know how much those things are, I think we have two now, is that right, Chief? Or who's that, different engineering or?
We have, um, three.
Three, okay. Uh, I've seen, uh, there's one over there on Wisteria off by Greenville Lake and they put it a hundred feet before the stop sign. I mean, hell, you're always going to be slowing down to stop at a stop sign, but those, I have people that, that want those. And I think if we can move those things around a lot, that'll help. Um, neighborhood traffic common, we require developers to put in sidewalks and improve intersections. Um, I, I, I don't know if they need to be a participant in some of these things or what, but uh, getting that motor vehicle tax up, uh, any revenue that we can get to go straight back into that program or to, to capital improvements to the neighborhoods, certainly fast muster would need. Uh, but putting in the speed humps, that, that's just, I mean, that's, that's not going to get it. Sure, Mr. Gold, this question about using the money for, for the broader sets of, of capital improvements. We can't do that, we can only use it for a neighborhood.
No, we could use it as we said.
Okay.
There are, there are, there's a lack of restriction. It's a remarkable lack of restriction, given it's a state statute.
Well, I would, I would advocate that we, if we did this, that we dedicated to these capital improvements to kind of help buy some of those down, they are significant as we all know.
Do we have a list of the?
I got, I got it on.
Do we have a list of the neighborhoods that have asked for traffic calming or that we have had issues in over the years? I, 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 I just, this all down my head, I, I know that we've had a lot of issues with the kids going through the university of Wrightsville over the years and neighborhoods have constantly complained about that.
Yes, sir, we have, we have not done that, we have not updated that assessment since two thousand nine, Mike, is that?
Uh, and I'm getting some Lincoln bars on Hall of Hacks and some of the straight streets where you have, you know, a street that's, you know, thirteen hundred feet long.
Garrett you, Hannah behind, South Front Street. We're recovering that list. I, I would just remind council and everyone else also, our intention was we know we can't resolve all issues at local dollars and we intended also to the staff to go after more federal and state money, if you remember that? Because leveraging our local dollars, the state federal, uh, you know, like the raise bill, where we get thirty million dollars with improvements, that's a small investment in the staff necessarily to prepare those applications, but also the destruction. So our intention is also the WNPO has about, what, four million dollars every year? The surface block grant transportation, and we're not tapping into it on the way that we need to be, and it's just because but we need to be tapping in, so the personnel will also, you know, are going to be doing that kind of workforce, tapping into it, planning, engaging residents as well as executing the structure.
So the person that you want to hire is, is the person that's going to be actually planning and designing this stuff?
Will be coordinating the projects and planning, uh, planning with grant opportunities, yes, sir. So the planner will be, the transportation planner would help with all the engagement, then you got a transportation engineer that can actually execute.
But if you don't get the grant, then you don't put it in place unless we go up on the CIP to help fund it. So why wouldn't we add additional funding, who are looking at indicated that the product toward service transportation issues?
We're also going to use it for block rent, you know, for math.
I mean, I, I look at this kind of like the stolen water fund.
Yeah.
You're raising revenue to fix these issues in these neighborhoods where we've been having these constant issues over the years.
Yes, sir.
And why wouldn't we use it that way? I mean, I get to point, what you're saying is that we've got a significant CIP fund that we have to take care of, but we've had these issues, these gnawing issues with neighborhoods for years.
Yes, sir.
To continue, I mean, they, they haven't gone away. And I know that they drive, I mean, I know they call the chief, so I know that you know, we get a pop out here, logic wheel road is another one, I mean, it goes on and on and on. And they're not doing any additional roadways. Um, the five interchanges I've been waiting for for ten years haven't come around. I don't know, Mike, when that will happen. Um, and so what I'm seeing is people are driving through neighborhoods or cutting through neighborhoods to make their way through other areas of town. I do it all the time, everybody does it that knows the area. And this is not, this is only, um, making the problem worse, uh, as the population continues growing in this area, which a lot of it is coming from out of the name, the, the, the area coming in every single day. So. Alan Pope once, former traffic division engineer once said, we were trying to get a stoplight on Oleander Drive, and he stood up, he said, it's our, it's our, it, it's our mission at DOT to move traffic, not stop it. But we can stop it, we can slow it down through neighborhoods because I know every shortcut in town, and they're not shortcuts anymore. I get it where I'm trying to get out with a line of traffic. We can put four-way stops, and I know we need to get our nose out of some of these manuals that we rely on and start putting in some four-way stops, and I got a list right here of, of people that have been calling me for wanting that. And that's not something that we can't do, we don't need to rely on Raleigh to get those things done. But going through neighborhoods is, I mean, it's, it's a real problem. It's a real problem, a lot of those neighborhoods don't have sidewalks. They're on the street. So we can do, they expect us to do it, and we need to do it. You brought up a, a phrase I've never heard before, what's a squeezer? It's, I just went over on Burnett Boulevard, where you go down and going toward the port. They're operating columns there, or they put little medians in, it's called. I like that word better, somebody's using chicanery, that's, that was a fancy word, he's strongly using the better word. I'm from one of the parts.
Hey, I got a, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
And, and I got several questions, but this, this initial question is for Luke. Um, I, I, I heard you say that these were just some thoughts that you were having. But could you, could you tell me what's the alternative to these things? Like, I don't see, I don't see your initiative, Luke. What, what I see laid out here is, um, a Republican agenda that's taking place all across our country. And so you're, you, you saying, hey, let's take this money from this, but to do what with? I, I don't, I don't see a, a clearly defined initiative that you have in place of these things that you want to take away. And that's kind of scary to me. Because I, I think, I think you're a bright guy, but I, I, I just see this as some cookie cutter type of thing you're trying to do that, that's not going to go over very well, and it doesn't benefit the citizens of Wilmington.
Respectfully, Councilman Spears, I would, uh, I would disagree. I think that lowering this tax burden on, uh, on, on the citizens that we represent absolutely benefits the people of Wilmington. They're stressed, they're pushed at every level. I just, we just voted, uh, yesterday at CFPWA, those, those rates are going up four point six percent. Um, uh, and, and city taxes, I mean, inflation's hitting, it, it hitting them at every corner. People are worried about how to put groceries on their table. Um, that's, that's my main driver and my main initiative is how do we get this down? How do we take some austerity measures as a council to lessen the tax burden from the increase that's being proposed? Uh, I put a lot of thought and time into this, uh, so I apologize if it's not as clear as you'd like to see. But, uh, I, I, I do see a revenue generator on the first item, a revenue generator that we could put towards capital improvements that are existing in the budget. Uh, and, and basically, and, and put the neighborhood traffic, traffic calming program, which I believe is a good initiative. Uh, but put it up, put it to a point, uh, maybe next, maybe next year where the budget looks a little different. We can do it without, uh, without having to impose a, an increase on our, on our citizens.
But, but we understand, and you understand, you're, you're involved in politics, everybody in the room is involved in politics to, to some extent. But we do understand what, what taxes bring about, you know, it, it's got a negative connotation and it, it doesn't look good, but it's how we take care of business. So, so that's understood and, and I understand, you know, the traffic calming program, get it? But even as you talk about the traffic calming program and you talk about taking DE and I off of the table, DE and I is needed for the traffic calming program because many citizens in this community see resources being allocated to different parts of this community and cannot quite understand why they haven't seen things take place in their community, communities in decades. Or when a capital improvements list comes out, they're often at the bottom of that list. Because we as citizens of this community and as natives of this community, we know who's going to get what first. So I, I, I do, I, I want people in the room, and, and we've talked about affordable housing and we talked about a lot of things this morning. But a lot of those things have taken place and a lot of those initiatives have gotten better because in these little settings that we're in and those public meetings that we hold, uh, certain people have have been very intentional about making changes to, to get us to where we are. And I don't, I don't mind an initiative, but I want to see an initiative. I don't, I don't just want to do things for the sake of doing it, do, do things that are going to benefit Wilmington, not, not to set us back, not to separate us just for the sake of pinching a penny, I, I just, I, I just don't like.
This council, this council and several previous councils going back quite a while, I think that the money that has been spent in this town
I think that the money that has been spent in this town on capital improvements, infrastructure, it, it's been spread pretty darn evenly across all communities. And for you to say that, that there's a segment that has been totally ignored or ignored more so than others. I have people that call me and maybe they don't call you Kevin, but I've had people call me from some of the more affluent neighborhoods wanting to know when am I going to get some help out here to get my pothole filled in and get a little pavement done, have a sidewalk put in? So it's, it's not just your communities that, that you're talking about. It's all of them. So I take great exception to that. I don't think anybody, I know from where I sit, I don't look at it based on somebody's racial background or whatever. Let me finish.
One more time, guys, please.
When, when these projects are brought to us, they're brought to us with much input from our engineering, our senior staff. And that's what I base mine on. Our opinions are always assertive. We'd like to see more here. And I know they do. I know the mayor, uh, the mayor's very even across the board. So I, uh, I, I support Luke in, in, in these programs. And, uh, we're looking to, to help our citizenry with a more affordable, uh, tax rate. That's it in a nutshell.
Yeah, well, that's good to hear, Charlie. And I, I'm certain you do support Luke and that Republican initiative and that's fine. But I didn't say one thing about race and I didn't say one thing about my community. I said communities. So you think, I guess it's just because I'm a black man, when I speak about a community, it's just about the black community. Well, I didn't get all black votes. I got votes from all over this community. I represent everybody in this community. So quit getting your panties in a bunch every time I say something about communities. I know what I'm talking about. I know who I talk to. I know who calls me and who doesn't call. I'm fine with that. But when I advocate for the communities, it's not just the black one. It's all of them. It's all people, have all types of people who called and interact with me, just like you do.
Um, staff, I've got the fiscal year twenty five recommended budget. Can somebody point me to the page number for the traffic calming program?
It's in a couple of different places. You have the positions in the departments. So there, I look at the page number of seven engineering, you have.
Page twenty.
Are you in the transm?
Yeah, it's in the transm.
On this report, so, um, rate that we're talking about, the earlier this has been proposed by, by your office and staff. It's my understanding that Georgia is just for C I P.
One point five cents, yes, sir.
And then the other part is for.
General fund operating one point two five cents.
And how much it is towards salaries, keeping our, our, our people adjusted rate that they need to be so we don't drastically change.
The amount of the proposal for salary adjustment exceeds the one point two five cents. The one point two five.
Be making some adjustments there to keep up with the way inflation or whatever you're looking for. If you're losing people, specific departments, and I'm sure you've evaluated those departments, if you're losing people in the street, um, who surfacing, I understand, we've all got three people in that department right now. And a lot of people move out of that department and get a job for a dollar more. Um, is this what we're talking about?
Uh, yes, sir. Um, and, and you'll recall back in January, I believe it was, uh, maybe it was March, when Clayton came before you and, uh, revealed the, the, uh, analysis that we did with regard to our own survey of our peer communities. And it showed that, uh, especially at, uh, uh, entry level positions of the organization, there were minor differences that were needed, adjustments that needed to be made. But generally speaking, we were, we were competitive and this will allow us to remain competitive at those entry levels. Um, the way this is broken down, generally speaking, three percent would be, uh, adjustments for salary ranges to make sure that they stay competitive. Um, and then two percent would be for merit on those folks who are, um, who are, uh, paid by the hour. It's the reverse for those, generally speaking, who are paid, uh, and it's by, by, as everybody says, salary. It would be a two percent adjustment and then three percent would go to merit. The reason we went for the larger three percent number on that is we have some disparities within departments. Just like you were talking about, areas where we need to entice people to come or entice people to stay. One of the things we're having trouble with right now, and I'm not going to get this right, so Dave Mays, please forgive me. Um, but we're having real difficulty with drivers, um, in sanitation who will leave for a dollar an hour more. Um, and, and we're now, we, we, you have gone up on all, you have been more than responsive to staff with regard to, uh, allowing us to adjust those rates and, and pay more for certain, uh, positions. And we very much appreciate that. What we're doing now is we're trying to tweak within, uh, the organization. We're paying bonuses for referrals and those types of things. But that three percent gives us some opportunity to adjust for what everybody likes to call compression uh, in the middle ra, in the middle ranges, uh, and then, uh, also attract and retain folks that, because frankly, retention is, is the biggest thing that we want to accomplish. So that is what the, their compensation is for.
So they're primarily going to the heart of this thing.
Yes, sir.
This is what it'd be clear to, uh, for those that are listening, watching, that those are the two areas primarily is keep at that rate to make sure that we're competitive at the same time and get a significant investment in C I P.
And, and the other side of that, and, and I'm, 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 I don't mean to offend anybody, but I've got, I've got to talk about this. We are seeing, uh, the results of market increases across the board, especially with regard to software contracts, uh, contracts for service outside of the org, from outside of the organization. And that is the way to do that. Most of this work, but we are seeing the results of an inflationary period that has been unusual for us over the course of the past twenty years. And so we're seeing, uh, cost of, of operations simply rising as a result of the renewal of these contracts. And I, I, I ran into a, a group last night when I left here who was touring the building for, um, uh, janitorial services. And we know that that cost is going to go up. We've had renewals, especially in the I T area, uh, where we've seen costs go up. So I can't give you an, a, a, an absolute aggregate number for inflation of those contracts, but our costs for services are just going up as a result of an inflationary period like we haven't seen in a while.
Well, and that's a tough thing in a city, you know, we talk about a lot. We've got a family of people that use our services every single day out of the road and so you name it. And a lot of them are in the unincorporated areas. A lot of them come from Brunswick County, Penner County into the city every day. But we have to maintain that infrastructure. There is no way an extension. So that's gone away. So we're stuck with what we've got. And we're either going to maintain it at a certain level or not. And we can let it go. We, we can't let it go. That's one side of it. But we can cut back on it considerably, but what it's going to end up with is like that Frank Olden filter commercial, if you remember it, from years ago, you can pay me now, pay me later. But when you pay me, you're going to pay me. And I think that's what happened in Brunswick County, Leland. I can't speak for them, but I think for many years they held back. They were, they were living off that of the hall. They thought it was great. Now their services are coming home to roost. And now they're having to make those significant adjustments. And one of the things that we've always taken pride in every time is to make these small adjustments over the years. So we would have to make the dramatic increases down the road. It's just the cost unfortunately doing business. Some of the things that Luke, you brought up here, I mean, worth looking at and taking a look at, but, you know, I, I see the, the problem that we're dealing with. And then if we don't adjust these salaries every time, we're going to get competitive again like we did a couple of years ago. And then we have to make this dramatic push up. And then people, it takes us two or three years to get to that point to be competitive. And then we start, you know, here we go again.
Nothing in this proposal advocates, advocates cutting salaries or.
No, but, but, but you're going to, you're going to just have to reality face the buck if you don't want to do that. I, I'm just trying to get an understanding of why it was rolled out the way it was. And I want people to be clear about this.
That's certainly not my intention to put council in a bad position. It's my intention to develop a budget that's built around the, the, the directives that you have provided over the years. Um, I will say that, that we have been very fortunate over the years to, to implement smaller tax increases than what's being proposed now. Um, and we do that, for example, in stormwater where we do the one percent increase every year. Uh, so incremental is, is generally speaking, better than larger, uh, pieces. But I do think it's important, uh, to recognize that there are, there are a number of expenses in this budget. And if council said, you know, no moss, we, we're going to do this, we, we could certainly go back and, and retool, but there would be a definite i- i- if it would not be considered a step backwards, it would be not a step forward, so.
I can support increasing the, um, motor vehicle tax, um, to whatever we're allowed to increase it to. I don't think that that's, that's going to be too much of a burden on, on somebody, um, with a car and, and, and chat. I think it's a good thing to use. Um, but everything else, Luke, you said that you don't want to eliminate any jobs, but I mean, eliminating programs does eliminate jobs, um, you know, especially, uh, D E and I, we just hired a new director and, and, you know, I, I think the program that the council has been reporting over the years and I don't think, um, that, that now is a good time to, to eliminate that. Um, you also mentioned, Luke, um, people are talking, putting food on the table and, um, under, under that heading, I want to say that I would like to reconsider, uh, you know, cutting the funding at half, uh, for Good Shepherd. And not that I'm trying to pick and choose between all these worthy causes, but that's basically what our job is. Um, Good Shepherd is providing a hundred thousand, excuse me, they're providing a hundred thousand hot meals, a hundred thousand additional meals, um, through the road through programs. And they're also supporting quite a few other organizations, sixteen smaller food facilities and ministries. And, um, I would truly like to keep their funding, uh, flat from last year with the twenty four thousand. And along those lines, um, uh, in the, uh, jurisdiction where I served before on council, we had a, a, a subcommittee of council members who were involved in the community funding program. And, um, I think going forward next year, that wouldn't be a bad idea. We, uh, I think it was Kevin that mentioned, we're all politicians and sometimes we think, you know, putting council members onto certain committees makes it political, but it's all political, everything we do. So, um, but I think that might help, um, if, if having a subcommittee of folks that are on the council, because we do hear the most from the community as far as what the needs are and, and from wide sections of the community. Um, and so those are, and, and I, I totally agree with the mayor and several others. And I said this about, um, you know, putting things off, letting things go. It, it only increases the, the cost in the long run. We've seen, um, the prices are not coming down on labor. They're not coming down on materials. Um, and so I think we need, I think the city has done a great job in the past, uh, being proactive and, and maintaining things. And we're just now starting to see some of the, the wonderful economic development impacts of, like, getting these infrastructure projects. And so, um, that's all I want to say. It was kind of a gap from twenty four to twelve.
They were asking for additional, instead of getting additional, they were cut back. Like our next comments, if it's after, I'd love to see them get what they ask for. They're the only legit soup kitchens in town. And they do, we, we're in bed with them on a number of things that they do, like bang up jobs. The other comment, that quarter cent sales tax is coming home to the roost, that it didn't fly. That was going to generate nice money. And anybody that can't afford a damn quarter when they spend a hundred dollars, they're, they're in trouble.
And I totally agree with you on that. I totally do. I think that, um, you know, sometimes we do have to rely on property taxes because, um, you know, we put, we put out references or, uh, you know, for a a quarter cent sales tax and, and people don't know, um, it, that's really hard because, you know, sales taxes, by the way, are, are regressive. You know, they hurt the, the people who are able to pay them. But I agree, it's a huge tax. But, um, you know, property taxes are more progressive. I mean, they, the, you know, who own property, they're going to have a higher tax impact and something like that. And the people who don't own property are going to have lower, I, I think that's fair.
Uh, Christopher, did you have a question?
Yes, sir. Can you put Luke's, um, um, s- suggestions up again for me?
It's, it's up there.
Okay, there it is. Okay, yeah. Um, I'll just go through my, 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 my thoughts on these. Um, again, um, I like the idea of small increases, which is what we've been doing since I've been on council. Um, so that we don't end up having, um, the major problems later on. The other thing is, is, um, I, I can, I can see us raising the increase for the, the motor tax, you know, maybe up another five dollars or ten dollars. That would be fine. Um, I do not, I'm not in favor of eliminating the neighborhood, um, traffic calming program. I think we need that. I'm definitely not in favor of suspending the affordable housing. Um, we need housing in Wilmington more now than ever before. And we all understand that, um, when we can help people to get in the house, that's the beginning of helping them to get their lives straight. So I'm definitely in favor of that. I'm also in, in favor of, um, keeping the affordable housing one percent, um, tax increase. I'm also in favor of, um, keeping the safe light, which I talked about a little bit earlier. Um, definitely with all that's going on in our world, in our country, especially even in our cities, we definitely need the diversity, equity and inclusion program. I'm definitely not in favor of discontinuing that program. Can you move it up a little bit, please? All right. Um, the council continues to fund. I think that, that's worked for us. That's worked for us in the past. We've not abused it. I think it's a good thing to have. So, uh, with that in mind, um, I'm in favor of the things that I, I've just mentioned with you. Um, I like the idea of small tax increases, which is what we've been doing in the past. And I think it's worked for us. So those are my comments.
Yeah, just, it was there and then. I appreciate that.
Oh, what is the, uh, our percentage of undesignated fund balance right now?
Sorry, can you repeat the question?
The, the balance of our undesignated fund balance.
We ended, um, last fiscal year at twenty seven percent and, um, estimated with this year. Uh, I think the estimate right now is twenty four percent.
Uh, I heard this morning the, uh, the NOAA prediction for our storm system. Um, and when you, they got twenty five, seventeen name, four or five. But that's for the whole world, not just coming up the Cape Fear River. Um, and I've always been a big proponent because I know when those guys come in here to clear our roads, they won't be paid a day. Not thirty or ninety days. So that's, but I'm a proponent of keeping that healthy. Is there anything in this budget that could be considered one time that we could go to the fund balance?
What?
We, we already did that in the budget. So I think there's two point three five million in there.
And what was it?
Two million is being transferred to, um, over to debt to take down the tax rate that we would have come to. And the rest is like three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we have in the budget.
So we've already paid down the tax rate as to what it was originally going to be?
Yes.
So I do have one more question. Not, I, I know we can't do it yet because everybody around the state is putting their budget together. But I'd like to see what the tax rates are for non-elective cities. Um, it, it, it will kind of where we fall in line with that. Do you want to see it separated by population size?
Well, you know, generally just, you know, somebody will say, I live in so and so, my tax rate's only whatever. You know, I had a guy left here one time. He moved to somewhere in Iowa. When he called, he said, man, my taxes are so low. He said, I live on a dirt street. I've learned my trash that I have a set of time to have them pop out, you know, every ninety days. So, you know, you get what? So, you know, you get what you pay for, and uh, but I, I'd kind of like to see where, kind of where we stack up, you know. I'll say, we use our peer cities in North Carolina, but non-electric.
Yeah, absolutely.
I have a sort of historic context question. We, this C I P is the third step in a planned three-step series of C I Ps, correct?
It is.
Like the first eighty twenty, second eighty twenty.
Yeah, it's the third eighty twenty, but it's not really the, the third city C I P. It's the, it's the third one that we had dedicated tax rate for.
After this one, once we hit twenty twenty nine, would we continue to look at eighty twenty as, is that just a best practice or? Okay, we, we wouldn't necessarily look at restructuring again, for a, for any reason now.
That would, Jennifer, I think that.
Yeah, we always consider um what a restructuring would look like. Um, the eighty twenty was adopted back in two thousand thirteen with the first um multi-year C I P plan, and it has continued. It helps us in a lot of ways. There's a lot of pieces to the uh projects that come through the C I P. That are not good for um twenty-year borrowing, that we use that twenty percent cash portion to front. As well as um we have an uh requirement that we can only go back eighteen months to reimburse the city for. So a lot of this, the city is paying upfront, and then we use those funds. We, we issue our debt a lot of times after the fact, and so we can only go back eighteen months to reimburse us. Those projects are taking longer, and the state requires, when we're issuing limited obligation bonds, that they have to be. We have to have eighty percent either bid projects or completed before we can go to them and get approval to issue limited obligation bonds. So sometimes the delay in that, we're not able to use borrow for, so we use that twenty percent cash portion for those as well. Um, as you've seen, our C I P project or our program is a lot of infrastructure related. So there's a lot of smaller projects in there too, that we don't want to do for twenty years. So there's a lot of things in there that that eighty twenty structure really helps us, helps us maintain. As well as we're putting in cash and leveraging the debt with it, um, so that also helps with maintaining our, our funding. And with the, the vibrating agencies.
One other question uh that you won't be able to do, answer for me until everybody puts their budgets together. But I would like to know what uh, when, when, from the county's general operating fund, their general fund. When they spend a dollar, what percentage of that dollar was generated by a city tax plan? Years gone by, it's been like forty seven, fifty, fifty one, fifty two percent. I'd just like to, you know, get as swaggy as you have to.
And not moving any of these, I wanted to present them for, for some discussion, I thought it was warranted. Obviously, one, one other item with regards to the affordable housing fund, uh, and removing that dedicated one cent. We do have that, that surplus of the program. I recognize it's probably not actually nine million dollars. That's six million dollars in, in committed funds. Were we able to ascertain what amount of that is actually city Wilmington commitments?
Yeah, we estimated about two point five million, so out of that nine million, we have about six point four.
So there's a six point four million dollar surplus there. That's, that, that's kind of the driver for me for removing that dedicated one cent. Roll in that two point three, two, I'm sorry, two point, yeah, you know, two point three back into the general fund. And then funding specific gap financing opportunities with that surplus. And then if we run out of that surplus and, and more opportunities arise, then we can look at, you know, whether or not we want to fund the non-fund balance. But six point four is a, it's a lot of money. We're looking at raising taxes.
I don't disagree with that, but can we go, can we go to the general fund uh repeatedly for that kind of thing?
You just have to go to fund balance and, and draw down on that.
That's what I meant, general fund, fund balance.
Yes, sir.
So, Tony, if you have a surplus, it doesn't roll over to the next fund, yeah?
It has, it has in four years, okay.
So if, for example, and I'm, I'm not going to get the percentages right. So for example, if you did away and use this six million dollars for something else, um, and then these.
That's not what I'm happy to, I'm out of the out of K for using the six point four for the gap finance and opportunities.
You're right, you're right, yeah. If you use it for gap financing, um, opportunities and more came through. Then you would draw down on that twenty four percent fund balance, and you. Of course, are free to take it as low as you'd like. Your policy says that you won't go below.
Twelve, eight.
Below twenty.
Uh, that's our policy.
That's your policy, yes, sir.
School of government or the council, I mean, what's, what's that crazy government, is that? I mean, don't they mandate that you, if it gets below, if it gets below twelve, you start getting letters.
Well, what they look at is where you're been at, and when you spend it down, what did you spend it on? And is it ongoing operations? And how are you gonna recoup that? Or why are you gonna continue your operations without continuing to spend that down? Um, and that's when you'll get a letter that our council will have to respond to.
So we've never used that for any ongoing expenses that I would want.
No, because of that matter, if you can't um fund your ongoing operation costs with the revenue that you're generating. And you have to go to your savings, and it's not a one-time thing, then that means you're gonna have to continue to do that. And you're gonna spend down those reserves and before you're gonna be without, and then they're gonna have to come in and make decisions.
So you spent something, what, what would that leave us?
So, say that one, say that.
If, if you spent some of that money on gap funding, I mean, the type, um, funding we're talking about, what would that leave us in that part?
So we have six point four, I just think, so if, I mean, I don't know.
The commitments or people coming forward with these.
Yeah, if companies come forward.
What, what are we looking at?
Uh, it would really be up to you to decide how much you wanted to fund for each project. We will bring you the proposal with a recommendation. We don't really have a policy of, of per unit cost, but that would be something you might want to consider. We can make some recommendations based off what other communities are doing. And that would help kind of with that.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is if there's a surplus there, and we could use it for some of this, and, and the commitment hasn't come forward from the developer, and so, yeah. And then we just, let's just say, and then we come to find out we need a million to give it, we could go to the fund balance to cover.
You could.
I know you would recommend.
I, I've got, I've got to say this, Mr. Mayor. We had a, a category one hurricane. Where we had to go into our debt service fund to be able to get enough money to operate. Following a category one hurricane. I've been through threes. I haven't been through a four yet. I'm hoping I don't have to live one in my career. It will be, it will be a dangerous gamble, in my opinion, to go below the twenty four percent. Given our precarious position on the coast.
We, we're questioning back. All right, Jennifer, the eight million that we were owed.
Yes, sir.
Have we gotten any of that back?
We have gotten about three million that was stormwater related um in the last month.
So we've got five left.
Yes.
And we're six, we're six years away from that event.
And we have them coming in next week to do an audit.
And you think that we'll get the remaining fund?
Um.
Which will be going back to what Jennifer?
Um, most of that is not going to the general fund. Most of that is going to um stormwater. We have additional projects in stormwater convention center fund, capital projects. There's probably um maybe about a million. Um, if that going back to the general fund. Um, I do want to make sure everybody understands, we didn't mention it on the affordable housing. One of the reasons, um. One thing, the one cent included in that is the ongoing admin that we have to pay. Um, because HUD funds only cover a certain amount of admin. So there is a portion that we have to pay from general funds, and that's one of the reasons general funds has always supplemented the program. The other piece of that, that balance that's remaining, um, over the last couple of years, um, with interest rates really low. And um the stimulus funding coming out, we had a lot of repayments and payoffs of the loans. That is, that was unusual, um, and so that brought a lot of funding in in those years that built up that balance, so. As that, it, interest rates are higher now, so we're gonna, we're not gonna see those paybacks coming in. Um, and our collection rate has also decreased significantly in the last three years. I mean, we have these loans and, and especially the HOP program, because they're a second lien on it. Um, so they'll pay their bank side of it, but not necessarily pay the second lien on it, which is us. Um, and so, you know, previous to that, we've had collection rates, you know, over twenty five percent delinquent. Um, and so, and we weren't getting those payoffs. So I think that's really key. We don't normally carry a balance of this, as you can see from the, the, the chart. That's an ongoing balance. It's just been in the last couple of years, we've had these big payoffs, and just want to caution you, we may not have that going forward. And so taking these funds away from the affordable housing program may have bigger impacts than what we're seeing right now.
Well, we can, well, we can.
Thank you, Jennifer.
We can have, well, it's a, it's a fund balance that can, you know.
Yes, sir, absolutely. Yes, sir, absolutely.
Hurricane season will be over.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
I, I, I will say this, what's worse than having one of those big ones, is having two within thirty five days of each other.
I recall that as well.
Nineteen ninety six, and Bertha and Fran, and then two years later, Floyd. Harold, I've always, and, and, and this may go against what everybody else here thinks, but I don't think twenty seven percent is enough. Or twenty four percent. I've always wanted to see that up around thirty, thirty five percent, because there's no reason in the world why God couldn't give us three. And I'm telling you folks, it's a damn mess. Um, it's a mess. So, select.
Well, I just wanted to point out that exactly what the city manager was talking about, uh, as far as, you know. The, the risk of increased storms, which we're facing all the time. I mean, this is one of the, this is one of the things that's driving inflation as well, is that. And I, I, I'll tell you right now, I'm not worried about my tax, my property tax increase. I'm worried about my homeowner's insurance on a lease, and this is exactly the reason, because the insurers, the, the actuaries that work for them. I mean, they are looking at this too and going, yeah, we need a lot more money from everybody to, to put away in, in our little rainy day fund. Um, so that's, you know, I'm, I'm much more concerned about uh. The effects of climate change, including these increasing frequency and, and, and severity of storms. Than I am about the, the small property increase, the property tax increase that we're talking about.
Well, the thing that adds insult to injury to me is you go to another part of the state and they're not facing these increases. If it all starts in line, so.
They're not.
We live here, we, we choose to live here, it's like, it's like the people that live in, in tornado islands. They choose to live there, their towns can be completely destroyed, they build right back right where they are. So that just, that's, that's part of life, and I don't disagree with what you're saying, but we're, we're, we're getting punished down here, because this is where we live. Yeah, I guess somebody asked a question yesterday, or did you, about the uh increase in insurance premium, forty two percent higher than. Yeah, forty two percent higher in the, in the insurance. Six hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars.
Yes, sir.
It's pretty significant.
On, on the affordable housing, the, the balance projected, that's a benchmarking of, of the, other communities and what they're subsidizing. That six point two, we, we've seen a number between twenty to thirty thousand dollars per unit. Uh, which is not really a whole lot. At basically three hundred fifteen units that we see coming online. Twenty thousand dollars would be about six point three million dollars, and, and we shouldn't expect. If you're gonna go thirty percent AMI, which is very low income, you're gonna expect more subsidy than you will if somebody's uh building a, a unit for eighty to a hundred, twenty percent. So, on average, right now, we could at least be able to assist. At twenty thousand dollars per unit for those three hundred fifteen units, given what balance is available. We don't know what they're gonna ask for. But we've had some conversations. I mean, it's not unreasonable. Uh, when you're trying to build affordable workforce housing. The market by itself won't do it, so you gotta look at something to buy down the cost of each apartment unit.
And I just want, along those lines, just one more thing, that, you know, our, our most recent community survey. I mean, people said that affordable housing is a, a priority for them. They said that um transportation and infrastructure is important to them. And that's, that's what we're looking at here. That's what we're looking at funding. We're, we're doing what our, what our citizens are asking for.
I, I would argue that.
What they need.
Proposal uh dedicates an additional one point eight two uh transportation and infrastructure, rather than just creating a new program. I, I mean, I don't want to belabor any of this. I thought it was important. I enjoyed the discussion. Uh, see where it stands.
Anybody else? Well, Mr. Mayor, uh, we have no other questions for you. Um, I do have a couple of notes that I'd, I'd, I'd like to make sure. That, that we address. First of all, uh, we owe you a, a deep dive analysis on the red light camera program. Which includes not only uh what our contract uh allows, but what other uh cities, three, three specific cities. Greenville, Raleigh, and Fayetteville did in discontinuing their program. What point in this contract did they do that? And um, also the question of the constitutionality of the law. Other things that I've heard um were uh the county uh tax generated dollars generated by folks who live in the city. The tax rate for non-electric cities that are peer cities. Um. And um, I also heard something about cutting funding for Good Shepherd, but I didn't hear any consensus. Uh, for Good Shepherd, but I didn't necessarily see uh here, um, I don't, don't think I heard consensus on that.
In Good Shepherd?
Twelve to twenty four.
Was that, was that, was that, was that cutting?
I, I misspoke, Mr. Mayor, for example.
Okay, it's the end grid. Yeah, I'm in favor, I mean, I.
That's, that's what I have from this morning's discussion. Have I missed anything?
This is outside the scope of this budget, but I think councilman Andrews and I in the future want to have a conversation about the. Uh, application for those funds and where those community organizations sit down.
I, 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 I did have uh the comment about having council members sent on the committee to allocate, on a committee to allocate.
My personal position doesn't, isn't that we have to have council members. If you want to be on it, I don't have a problem with council members being on it. But I want to have a, a review of that process and a review of our priorities and how that's reflected in the process. Moving forward, I think obviously people went through the process with a understanding this year, it would not be fair to retroactively. Boil that back up, but next year I want to talk about that.
We, we like a net of hot committee, or would that be a firm standing committee?
Well, I mean, it could be just a, a, a standing committee of council, that's, that's working, but, but it could also change every year. I mean, I, that's, that's was my experience. It just changed every year, so I guess in that case it's a hack, but. Um, but just to have some political input, if you will, you know, from, because we're out there lis- listening to a whole lot of. You know, and. They're gonna cut it up anyway, yeah.
But we, we used to have a beauty badge that would happen once a year. We don't do that anymore.
Yeah, we, we, we developed a process um about the time I got here, I believe. Um, that brought it out of, of the more public realm, went it through what we consider to be a much more quantitative process. Or a more quantitative process, um, and then put it back into uh council's realm. To be able to take um their recommendations and modify them as they saw fit. But we certainly can change that process. There's no worries about that. I will let you know that next year you will have the economic development. Um, funding coming up for renewal, but you will not have the, the uh social uh agencies coming up. That'll be two, two years out. So we can, we could, we could set it up, set something up, talk about setting something up for next year with E D. And then see if how it works out, and then go through that process again.
I think it's nice having, put a face with the, with the name of the nonprofit, and hear what they gotta say and what have you. Uh. At this point, I, I, I mean, the budget seems to be pretty much where it is, but there's uh, and, and. When I say these things that I'm getting ready to say, generally, they're not received real well by the, the, some of the employees with the city. But there are two groups of employees in the city that we spend a great deal of money getting them prepared to do their job. One's police, one's fire. And those guys, when they do that, it's a calling in their heart, and, and, and it's a career, that that's what they're looking for. And, and that every day when that bell rings or that nine one one call goes off, we may lose them. And that's not something that you can say about other people that work for the city. I know everybody has stressful jobs, and our employees do an outstanding job, and I'm so grateful. That we're finally able to have everybody under one roof, because I know it's got to make a difference. I hear people say, uh, I met somebody today that I've been emailing back and forth for years, and I finally met him in the elevator, aware of him. But I would certainly like to start planning this year, right now, for next year's budget. Where we can meet some of, some of, not demands, but some of the concerns that we have with turnover in the department, with that impression that we talk about. I understand how that works, but. But our police and fire, uh, that's probably one of the most visible, that and solid waste, probably the most visible thing that we do as a city. Um, and, you know, it, it, it just is. I'd like to, to see what we can do to make things better landing for those guys. I think that program that Steve and Chief Williams brought up today is, is certainly a step, a step in the right direction, but, uh, I just, I know that that's, uh, something I want to see at least addressed. I want to go back to the statement you thought of about the, um, forty five dollars.
Yes.
And using some of that money for, um, that, but, you know, I, obviously sidewalks have always been a big issue, the, the, what we call the go pass that we're constantly talking about doing in this, this, the right to some of that, we want some addition for, could we do that? Is that something that we've been talking about, accelerating that program for sidewalks?
Perhaps what we could do, and I'm just spitballing here, um, we could solicit from council, uh, places where they not only have neighborhood traffic calming issues, but also pedestrian issues. Uh, and we could bring something back to you, uh, to help us prioritize a work, a plan for these individuals once we got them hired.
I think it's a place for that, they're not a price to store. I know, I know there are, I've talked about it here. All of the sidewalks has always been around the schools, right? So, but even so, if they stop at some point, then the kids have to get out of the road, walk home if they're walking, riding the bikes, whatever. And that was something that we've been talking about for quite some time. This gives us an opportunity to accelerate some of that and it goes right into traffic calming, getting people off the street and for public safety. I, I, I for one would support that.
Yes, sir. My proposal was contingent by, well, my support of that proposal was contingent on eliminating the, the, the neighborhood traffic calming program. I'm going to call a department. I realize that's incorrect, but departments, it, it's in a new department. Rather than taking that full, that full amount to, uh, this transportation related capital improvements that are already in there. So that doesn't change, um, from my standpoint, but I understand there's, so.
Well, a great deal of the money that this city has spent in, in the last twenty years, uh, was in areas that we annexed. They were unengineered neighborhoods, no sidewalks or anything installed. Um, where they were operating under a non-city, uh, development ordinance. And we have spent millions of dollars with stormwater sidewalks. We do one right now, grieving, where we got cut off access with kids having to get on greathens. I can walk the bracket. So, you know, some people, I heard somebody on the radio the day I got annexed and I didn't get anything. Well, he's got the expectation of adding something. That's something to say. And we have spent a boatload of money in the, in the newly ninety five, ninety eight annexation areas. Um, just have, um, so.
Well, if there's nothing else from council, um, Dawn had, uh, texted me to let me know that the food was here about forty five minutes ago. Uh, so I just let her know that we're wrapping up. We will have food available for you down in the cafeteria. We anticipated that you might go beyond lunch. So if you'd like to go down there and have something to eat or pick it up and go, uh, take it with you, you're certainly welcome to do so. We'd like to thank you, excuse me, for your time and your consideration. Uh, we know that this is not an easy process. We appreciate it.
Thank you. It was fast. About all of everybody for putting all this thing together. I know it doesn't just happen.
Yeah. Thank you, guys.